Hello and welcome to the May 28, 2024, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation on every island, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both, and no sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. Next, citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. And finally, all sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular City Council meetings of April 9th and April 30th, 2024?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes are passed. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. We have a housekeeping matter to bring up front. Staff would like to table at the request of the applicant, Item 10D, which is SSA 3, 2022, Bristol-Titusville, 2/9, July 2024.
Could I have a motion to table that? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Table. City Manager.
Onto Boards and Commission, Item 6A, which is the Titusville Environmental Commission recommendations relating to the Indian River Lagoon, TEC powers and duties, artificial turf, resiliency, virtual meetings, and Royal Oak Golf Course. At the 15 May, 2024, the Titusville Environmental Commission approved several recommendations for City Council's consideration and direction. The six items are before you, and staff is here to answer any questions you may have on them.
Member Nelson.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Just for clarification, City Attorney, we are going to... This is one item, Boards of Commission, 6A. So it'll be voted on at one time, three minutes total.
Correct. This is one item. You have several subjects under this one item. So if anybody wants to speak as to any of the 1 through 6, they should do that at this time, and each speaker will have three minutes to speak on this item in total.
So it's one item, several issues.
Correct. One item. So if anyone wants to speak on any of those, they should do it during their three minutes. That's correct.
All right. Staff, anything to add to this as we go forward?
No, sir.
Counsel, anything? All right, call cards.
Yes, sir. Five cards have been submitted. The first, Tony Shifalo.
Tony Shifalo, Tropic Street. Since I opened this can of worms, let me elaborate. This is the one about the land along the river. The city's proposed updates to the comprehensive plan has a section on shoreline mixed-use goals and objectives in the future land use element. Objective 1.12, shoreline mixed-use, lays out two main goals. Yep, two main goals to preserve and enhance the visual and functional use of land along the Indian River Lagoon east of Highway 1 while providing public access. If you read the latest comp plan, you can see the intention is to maintain access to the river shore, both physically and visually. And it's also meeting the new goal number six, community design to conserve natural resources. A quick survey of the remaining undeveloped land using the Brevard County Tax Office Property Search shows most of the empty land is owned by the county and the city already, and some of it's already designated a park, probably owned by the city and maintained by the county. A few empty lots are owned by individuals or trust funds, and these are the ones the city should pursue to purchase or obtain easements in order to build that continuous riverfront pedestrian bike trail that was struck from the comp plan, Policy 1.12.2, strike through. My suggestion to TEC to ask council to explore the creation of city-owned and maintained properties kept vacant in perpetuity for the citizens comes from the magnificent view of the Kennedy Space Center across the river from the empty lot at Harrison and Washington next to the post office. The spacious property located there is already owned by the city and is used now just as a storage lot for traffic lights. How sad it would be to see this riverfront sold for development of maybe a 10-story apartment building or another health clinic. The city should keep all the riverfront land it already owns, wrangle control of all the lots belonging to the county, and obtain easements along the already developed properties. Then TEC can request that the shoreline be protected, not hardened, but allowed to return to a natural state, perhaps installing educational projects such as mangrove plantings, sea grass reclamation, horseshoe crab counting on the soft sand. Let's... It made me sing a song. Let's build a gateway to the stars, build a walkway to the moon at that lot right there by the post office. What a great view. Take a look at it.
Well thought out.
Thank you.
Wait, can I ask a question?
Yes, I'm sorry, Tony?
Tony. So, looking through the TEC's recommendations, I was gathering from this, it was a focus more on looking at properties that are owned by other individuals, not the city and county. So would you say, and this is, again, you can't speak on behalf of the TEC, but in your opinion, would it be like, would that be the focus as like number one? And then maybe look at the other things that you mentioned? But from gathering this, it was more of, let's just take an assessment and see what properties are available for potential purchase as our first course of action?
Yes, because we are, you know, I hadn't thought it out before I presented it to TEC. And I looked at the maps, and I see that the county owns a large portion, and the city owns other properties. And then there is a section that's totally developed already. So I'm not sure, but I would say, Ms. Stokel, that the main emphasis would be to create a river trail as outlined in the previous comp plan, you know, with pedestrian and bicycle access along the riverfront. And secondarily, to maintain as much natural as we can, because so much of it's already been hardened, built upon, taken away from the public. So that's my, that's kind of my thought.
Gotcha. Thank you for clarifying.
Good, thank you. Okay, now, next card.
Kay Saint Ange.
Kay Saint Ange, Maryland Avenue. I wish to speak partially about number two, TEC powers and duties. The city code has designated TEC as the Tree Board, which is a requirement of the Tree City USA, that there be a Tree Board. And the code goes on to say it is a responsibility of TEC as a Tree Board to establish and administer a tree ordinance and to plant, and for their planting of trees in parks and along streets. So TEC has, is the Tree Board, and as such, it would like to fulfill its responsibilities as such a Tree Board, according to Tree City USA. So I wish that you would give that some thought. Also, I just want to make a general comment. TEC has recommended some innovative ideas and actions as listed under Agenda Item 6A. There are six different actions or ideas that they're proposing. In my opinion, for each of these items, staff should have provided counsel with some background information from the TEC meeting when these ideas were discussed. It doesn't seem like you're being given enough information on which to make a decision about these ideas. At the minimum, excerpts from the minutes about these discussions would be helpful to counsel. As you know, there's always at least one member of the planning department at TEC meetings, and it just seems like they could have provided you with just a tad bit more information to make your decisions. Thank you for listening to my opinions.
Thank you, Ms. Ange. Next card.
Kristen Lorti.
Hello, Ms. Lorti.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Kristen Lorti, Coco Resonant. So I was really glad to see this. This is a form of progress, from what I see. What I like to see is that the staff is presenting recommendations from the TEC via this agenda item. Sometimes there has been the complaint, I've had the complaint, that items that the TEC talks about never make it in front of you, and we don't know what happened. So I like to see that. I would like to see a presentation by a member of the TEC first to introduce this, and I agree with the prior speaker that there should also be a summary included in the meeting packet. So, on the content itself, there's one in particular that I'd like to speak to. First of all, I support all the items. I was at the meeting. It is a recorded meeting, so you're fortunate. This is one of the five, 50% of the recorded meetings, so you could actually watch this to get more informed. Unfortunately, you will not be able to watch the June meeting because that is not scheduled to be recorded because of the meeting that you had on October 10th of 2023, where council decided to only record half of the meetings, and to which I object to. So the item that I would like to speak on is on number five. They recommend City Council allow members who are unable to be present for the TEC meeting to attend and vote virtually. So I strongly support that. I even found online that there is a county that is allowing online attendance at their meetings. I put it up on Facebook. I forgot the name of the county at the moment. But there's more and more of a precedent that people are expecting to be able to participate in meetings remotely. And I'd like to add to that, that in April, the TEC unanimously voted to request that City Council record and livestream all the TEC meetings. So what is happening isn't working. And to make a comment based on what Mr. Larisse had said during the October 10th meeting, he used the reference of an audible, that if the current method isn't working, he used a football reference of a football audible, and which is a verbal instruction that can slightly change the predetermined play or any adjustment to the called play after the huddle breaks. And so I would like to call for that audible. We're now five months into the year, and I would strongly encourage the council members to insist and to request that all the meetings be broadcast. You were not offered on October 10th a fourth option to broadcast all of both of the meetings. You were presented a choice to broadcast either all of the TEC or all of the VAA meetings, or half of each. There was never a presentation to you as to how we could broadcast all of them, and if there was not, if it was not neutral cost-wise, then what would it cost? So I would like to see number five adopted, allow Member Majak to participate remotely, allow the continuity of that flow, support all of these other ones, and please help the residents get informed on what's going on in the city of Titusville. Thank you.
Thank you. I got beeped out. Thank you. Next card, please.
Jenny Derska.
Hello. I'm here, and I wanted to speak on the issue of the Royal Oak Golf Course redevelopment. And I'm realizing that I don't know what the environmental board's recommendation is to the City Council. But I appreciate that they have a great deal of expertise and understanding of the environment. And so I just wanted to say that if it involves a reduction in the amount of rezoning that has been proposed by the developer, that's a really good thing. We here, the public, has been trying to have some pushback against this development. We all know that the best thing to do for our community, for the river, is to allow downward pressure of fresh water into the aquifer to slow the inward pressure of salt water due to increasing climate change. We all know how destructive pavement and the reduction of water-absorbing surfaces is to the watershed, and we know how it increases flooding and increases drought. When citizens vote for the City Council, and therefore the members of the environmental board and other agencies and boards, we don't know exactly what issues are going to come before them, but we certainly hope that you will do the right thing for the community at large. We are here, and we are enjoying this place. There is precedent for golf course redevelopment, and what is being proposed is an incredible zoning change from recreational to eight units per acre density. And it's beyond anything that we certainly hope could ever actually pass. It seems like they're throwing spaghetti at the wall, I hope. Maybe a 25 to 35% zoning change of some of the properties that would hopefully not cause as much disruption to the character of the community and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Michael Majak.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hey, brother, how are you?
Council. I'd like to call a point of order first.
Go ahead.
Okay. As a member of the Titusville Environmental Commission, Vice Chair, I can tell you that we labored hours over every one of these things. And I would like to know how you would feel if the planning and zoning boards, all of their individual decisions were all lumped up into one agenda item, because that seems to be where we're going here. We're an equivalent board. We're an advisory board to you. But I read the agenda packet, and what we discussed and what these highlights are together as six points in one thing that these people can come up and speak on, to me, borders on malfeasance. We did a lot of work here, and every single one of these needs to be discussed and voted on with a voice vote, a roll-call vote by every one of you.
All right, let me stop the clock for a second. City Attorney helped me out here, but I believe that every one of these will be voted on separately.
Yeah. However you want to handle that, but yes, you would address each one separately. It's not required to have a roll-call vote. That's up to council if a member wants to have a roll-call vote. But you certainly would address each of these.
Yeah, I wouldn't lump them together. I believe that they're voting separately.
Look at how we're being slowed down. Our data never made it into here. You have no idea what the depth of these discussion points are. They weren't in your packet. That's why I'm calling a point of order. This is not what I came up here to talk about. I'm telling you that this is wrong. We should not have a board of this city lumped together in something that's inappropriate. These are important issues, and to throw them together into a summary like this, to me, just like I said, I think it borders on malfeasance. We can do better, and you should do better, sir. Now, that said, I'm just going to go from the top. May I have my time back, please? I was complaining about a point of order.
Go ahead, speak, and then when it goes beep, we walk on extending. And don't hurry up, this is go.
City Council, we asked you to explore the bond referendum. This was not just to buy those lands that we could, but it was also to get money in the coffers to restore and recover the lands that we have. We don't have any management money to maintain those lands or restore them in any way. And so this bond referendum was to go way more than just purchasing a few land, a few pieces of land. It was to finish recovering what we started in 2004. That was not in your agenda packet. The powers and duties specifically changes duties related to the comprehensive plan and to the Titusville Tree City USA, enclosed or draft changes. Where are the draft changes? I didn't get them anymore. And please, a moratorium on synthetic plants? Do we really need to add more gross plastic into the environment? Chief Resilience Officer Zachary Eichhold, I have been...
Let's extend for two minutes, and we'll go from there. Thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
Zack has got a wonderful plan over in the city of Cape Canaveral. They're building rain gardens already, and they're using grant money to do that. I like to say we could use it to make wet, squishy spaces inside our city, because that's what we need to do, is to get the water back in the ground, not into the water lagoon and the river. And that's what the whole point of Royal Oak was, capitalizing on the fact that we've got ponds there, a dozen, 15 ponds, that we can enlarge and use as a stormwater capture area, as a stormwater park, and then take that excess water and pump it into the ground into wellfields 2 and 3 using a process known as Artificial Sir-Aquifer Restoration, ASR, and make our groundwater recoverable instead of dumping it into the lagoon. And members that are appointed to boards in the state should be allowed to vote remotely. We don't have the same responsibilities and duties as members like you that are voted on by the public. When we're appointed, we don't have that same responsibility. So our interactions and our votes are valuable, and I would like to continue to participate on the TEC while I'm in Maine for the next few months. But these topics were important, and I feel like the way that this got pulled together and presented to you was weak and intentionally to deny what we have come forward with. And I think that's wrong, and I hold that man accountable for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Nelson.
Mike, if you don't mind, can I ask a question? I spent some time thinking through these items the other day. And when I got to the idea of having people who are not here vote for issues before the TEC, members appearing remotely, my thought was, we have alternates, and aren't we denying them the right to participate? I mean, the idea of having alternates was, so if you guys aren't available, we'll have somebody there. But also, they're alternates to get experience, to really get a chance to delve into things. So I was sort of...
Sounds like you answered your own question. I'm available by Zoom. I can vote by Zoom, and I can participate. Now, let me tell you something else. On the TEC, we allow our alternates to participate in the meetings, whether they're voting or not.
Okay.
It's an open forum.
That was just, you know, I was seeing they're going, you know, these people are sitting there. It's like being, you know, the stand-in in a play and never getting to really be on stage.
I don't know if Jim Yont will be able to participate remotely while he's gone, because he's off working. So we will need an alternate there, too.
Okay.
You know? So your alternates will still get used. And I may not be able to make every meeting. There could be a thunderstorm, and the internet could go down. Who knows?
Okay.
But if I'm available, I'd like to be able to participate.
Okay.
Call. Next card.
Laura Lee Thompson.
I didn't see you.
I'm the Chair of your Titusville Environmental Commission, and I'm here to provide background on these six items that you did not receive any background information on. I can't do it in three minutes, so you can let me talk for three minutes and then extend the time, or just let me go. Okay. Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue in Memes. So I agree with what Michael said. I feel like we were short-changed by not getting at least a page of information on each one of these recommendations that we spent hours discussing, multiple meetings discussing. So number one, recommend the city explore the possibility of the bond referendum? Absolutely. There are undeveloped properties that have been sitting there vacant, you know, for over 20 years since the previous referendum. They are, in most places, cases are not developable. And, but because the city doesn't own them, it prevents us from creating the riverwalk that we had envisioned, and like Michael said, we cannot maintain them. The shoreline is washing away on the south end of town, and every time we have a major storm, we lose a little bit more shoreline. But we can't do anything to, like, put in shore breaks, wave breaks, or anything without owning the properties. And so that's the reason that we wanted that. We want to complete what was started, like he said, back in 2004. Our shorelines are a mess, and we're in jeopardy of having it eat all the way to US-1 if we have a couple of bad storms. Number two, we are very frustrated over the powers and duties that are written into the comp plan that we absolutely cannot fulfill. And so you did, there was an attachment, and it says, "Establish Titusville as a Tree City USA", and it lists a whole bunch of things that are absolutely impossible for the for the TEC to be able to do. So we recommended that we add the four requirements for being a tree board into this item number six so that we are at least covered. Because we don't believe that the way that things are going now, we are not fulfilling the duties as a tree board. And we feel like we should take down all these Tree City USA signs that are around town because we can't act as a tree board. And I'll say, for example, I have here the Community Forestry Program annual budget for the last ten years. And one of the things that we're supposed to be doing is planting trees. Okay, so trees planted in 2023, zero. Trees planted in 2022, eight. We had a good year in 2021. We planted twenty-eight trees, 2024. So it goes on. The first, 2016, 15, 14, and 13, zero trees. Oh, I'm sorry, we did plant thirty-six in 2013. But that's one example of the things that we're supposed to be doing as a tree board. And it's because there's the $2 per capita that is supposed to be used for planting trees and things like that, that's actually being used by the city to trim trees and cut down trees and maintain trees. And those should be things that should be covered by the Public Works Department anyway. Number three, institute a moratorium on granting variances for artificial synthetic vegetation. That's a no-brainer. That stuff with the sunlight, it rots, it turns into microplastics, it's going to wash down into the lagoon. You, the BAA, their word is final. So they issued an allowable thing for one homeowner. Now you've got two more that want variances to put in plastic grass. And we think that's wrong. We just spent a lot of time working on the tree list to try to get native vegetation into the city's ordinances. Recommend the city council to have a presentation by Zack Eichholz. They are so far ahead of us as far as outstanding projects. I mean, one of the things that they're doing is they're looking at the direction of traffic flow. They're going to make their neighborhood streets one-way only, zigzagging back and forth. They're planting trees all over the place to try to help with stormwater. And they're putting in detention underneath the sidewalks in the streets. And that's just a few of the things that Zack's doing. Recommend the city council, allow members... There's two organizations that I sit on, the IRL NEP Citizens Oversight Committee, that is the County Oversight Committee for the Lagoon Tax. They are allowing members to attend meetings and vote by Zoom. This is because after COVID, the governor allowed us to do that. And then when COVID restrictions were lifted, then all of a sudden we weren't allowed to do that. Well, now they have initiated a new thing where meetings can be done like that. The IRL NEP also allows members to attend and vote by Zoom. And then finally, Royal Oak. That is a no-brainer. There are examples all over the United States where golf courses, defunct golf courses are being turned into stormwater parks. And there's a big one in Houston that by connecting the lakes and digging them out deeper, they have the capacity to store a half a billion gallons of stormwater and keep the neighborhoods from flooding. And in our case, it would keep a lot of fresh water from going into the lagoon. I was at a meeting with a member of the St. John's River Water Management Governing Board earlier this week, a three-hour meeting. We looked at all kinds of maps of Titusville and we talked about all kinds of strategies. And he finally said, look, there is no easy answer for Titusville. You do not have any big canals that we can reverse the flow and headed the water back to the west. The only solution for Titusville is a collection of stormwater parks. What a beautiful thing that would be for Titusville. Imagine little parks all over Titusville where we are holding and detaining stormwater and keeping it from going into the lagoon and providing a wonderful amenity for the folks that live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura Lee. Next card.
Our last card, Stan Johnston.
Stan always gets to be last. You always act like you're clean. I don't know why they let you be clean up all the time.
Is this the best you can do? I mean, from what Mike said and what Laura Lee had shared with us, this isn't very good, what's going on here. I mean, you're not really looking at making decision on what TEC has gone through. I don't know if you remember, it's the last, there was a referendum, millions and millions of dollars, is that the city, the people of the city of Titusville voted to pay for properties along the Indian River Frontage. And we did, millions and millions and millions of dollars. Well, we're not going to forget what we did in the past. This is what's in your package right now, about the six different items. And number five, Roman numeral four, it says to review and make recommendations of the planning and zoning in city council on environmental, water resource, environmental sustainability issues pertaining to the adopted comprehensive plan. Well, I think we can see it's not working. This says end sewage pollution. That was on a march that the people did because of there's so much sewage going in the river that's not reported. And another reason, and also the spraying sewage on the people. Now, in fact, the environmental commission, they had an issue to go, that was supposed to go to council on this sewage. In my recollection, it had to do with whether you're going to fence it or not, these ponds. But so what did you do? You did nothing. You cut, lifted the touts on and sprayed people with sewage. This is a big issue. And this has to do with these changes here and the council obeying what they have in their laws. You're not obeying it. And is this important? Well, I think it is. In fact, I think the reason is you see that Laura Lee and Mike and so forth, all of these people are on the Titusville Environmental Commission. I've been seeking to be on the Titusville Commission for years. And we know why you won't have me on there because, you know, I'm finding all kinds of laws you're breaking. And I think it's wrong. And I've been reporting it to the governor, St. John's, and all others, but nobody's listening. But the newspaper, they went ahead and put sewage in the paper and you still ignored it. So right now, as we have a problem, you report yourself, okay?
All right, thanks, Stan.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Sorry, we have one extra card. Laura Ward.
Laura Ward. Laura Ward. Hi, Laura Ward. Name and address for the record.
Laura Ward, 5317 Riverhead Drive. I had requested that the park name be on the agenda. It came on the agenda, I didn't realize. And I was in Baltimore last, or two weeks ago, and I could not be at your meeting. So I missed my own item. So I feel like I would like to come in and I feel like I watched your discussions. And I think there are some pieces of the big picture, important pieces, that you didn't have at the time you were discussing about the name. And I would really appreciate it if you would allow me to get with Scott and try to find a light agenda that I could come back and give you. You're missing a lot of data. You didn't have a lot of data. And I think you're missing some very important things before you make a decision. And if you would allow me to come back, I'll promise you that I'll make it easy for you. I'll bring a suggested solution that will address all the issues that I heard you talking about the other night. So that's my request.
Okay. At this point, I think that's a little bit off of what we're talking about here. It is environmental, that's for sure. It's TEC kind of related.
Yeah, this is my petitions and requests, Ms. Ward. This is the item.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
What the heck? I'm so confused.
Relax, relax. We've got it said now, let us deal with this and then we can...
All right, I'm...
I didn't want to interrupt you. You were doing well.
Okay, I ask your pardon again.
You're all right? No, 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 you're fine. You're fine. All right, now, any other cards?
Yes, sir.
I guess the first thing I would say to staff as we get ready to discuss this is, is there anything on any one? I know that, for example, there was a concern with some legalities on Royal Oak at this time due to contract, being under contract. So I'd like to have some of that explained as we go. And I'll go ahead and say, let's start with Royal Oak. Whoever wants to explain that over there.
We did meet with Trust for Public Land. There's a few requirements that they need. One, they need a willing seller. That the property is currently under contract. And so they won't address that until they have a willing seller. The second that was brought to our attention is the city, in order for them to talk to the city, needs to come up with the money to purchase it. Number three, they only purchase the property at the appraised value, not any improved entitlements. The next thing is they will not participate if it's dealing with a stormwater park. They need public access is what their goals and requirements are. Richard, I don't know if you need to add anything more?
That's a good summary. We did meet with them and as he said, one of the primary, if we're only talking about the involvement of the Trust for Public Lands group, they said it's not an active project for them because it is not available for sale, it is under contract, and they will not be involved when a property is under contract. And as stated, the city would need to identify funding, grants somehow, that they would be able to come up with the money to purchase the property, of course, and being willing to move forward. And again, it would be for public access. So as far as the recommendation for city council to work with and support, I'm just reading from the agenda, citizens that are trying to acquire Royal Oak, I'm not sure what is meant by work with and support the citizens trying to acquire. But my understanding is that they were trying to work with Trust for Public Lands. And that's why we met with them. And those are some of the impediments to utilizing Trust for Public Lands at this time.
Members Stokel.
Yep. So I met with the citizens as well about what they're trying to do. And I feel like, hearing both sides and seeing where some of it, I'm trying to mediate between, I feel like what is probably happening. One, willing seller, I get, the land right now is under, I think it's contingent upon if they were to get the land use change and rezoning. So I feel like it's not really active at this point. Like, yeah, somebody owns it. It's kind of in the process of being sold, but it's not yet. So I feel like there's a little bit of gray area there where maybe if this doesn't go through or whatever their plan is, that there would be a potential for a willing seller to be there. As far as the money being there, from how I understand it, they help to locate different grants and different entities that could kind of contribute to it. So yes, I do think there would be work that would be involved, but this has been done elsewhere in other municipalities. So I do think it is feasible. And I do still feel like, and I've mentioned it several times, that we are missing out on getting money. Like, we didn't ask for any state appropriations last year. Like, I feel like there is money to be had, we just have to work for it. Appraised value, that one I'm not sure about. And then the stormwater, this is one I am confused about. So I feel like we're hearing a lot about stormwater, but then it's, I feel like they public still can access a stormwater park. So that's where I'm a little bit confused.
I would think there would be some aspect of a stormwater park that could be public access.
Right.
Correct. That would just be part of the plan, if you will. So it wouldn't be just for retention of water. There would be a public access component that would be required if you're going to utilize the Trust for Public Lands, so.
Okay. So I think at this time, we kind of need to see what happens with the land. But I would be in favor of, I would like us as a city to be a little bit more proactive in trying to come up with things that we can do, especially as we mentioned several times, that we're trying to preserve our conservation areas. We see our open space getting chipped away. We're also seeing our commercial space getting chipped away. And I'd just like to be mindful of that. So I've been doing my own, like digging and looking at some of what's happening with other golf courses and how other cities are kind of being creative. And I'd like us to stay a little bit open-minded on it. So I think we have to kind of see what happens with what's going on now and then kind of, I don't want to just say, no, we're not doing it, that's not our job, but be available and open to kind of what could happen.
I have a very similar story. I met with some folks and some of the leaders over there who are doing their best to come to a solution. It does sound like, when I was able to talk to city attorney and city manager, first I was glad that they met with such a company that does that sort of thing. But it also does look like until this contract thing is resolved or who's going to buy it, what they're going to, you know, try to do, et cetera. Because what they're going to try to do will be a whole nother case. But at this time, it sounds like those companies that want to help with the park or whatever may be, they're out until there's no contract. And then apparently the city has to come up with the money because the city has to be the one to pay. I guess what I'm saying is, I'm all for doing something back there. I remember 2016, when I got on and we had a whole room full of people with Royal Oak because I guess it was just going under. And at that time, we had two brothers fighting each other in courts and they went on forever. And I actually got to talk to one of those brothers and said, basically, do what you're supposed to do or move on. But he didn't have to listen to me. But somewhere along the line, they got that settled. And it always seems to be in court or there's a problem with the fact that somebody's got it under contract, which doesn't mean a whole lot except for on hold. But I can't sit here and tell you, I mean, I've got a long history out there. First time I ever played golf is out there. First time we ever had a Little League party was at that swimming pool in 1967. I actually was a waiter when Frank Sinatra Jr. came to sing there. I won't tell you, I spilled somebody's prime rib gravy on him. So, what's that? Yes, yeah, it is. It's a historic place. It's a historic place. And for me, it's even more than that. And I'll leave it at that. I had high school proms there, had my wedding rehearsal dinner there. It's an important place. And now add to that historic place. Now add to that, the beauty it was as a golf course, my game wasn't a beauty, but it was a beauty as a golf course. We love the place. And I agree that as we move forward and get some of these things untangled, we need to stay in communication. So I don't think anybody would say that we want to just leave Royal Oak like that. I don't think that's the case. But it does sound like at this very moment, as Member Stokel said, and city attorney and city manager, right now, the issue is it's under contract. And illegally, there's nothing much anybody can do with that while it's under contract. So we just have to stay on top. Member Nelson?
You forgot to mention Tarzan.
Well, Tarzan was...
Tarzan was out there.
Oh, he lived over there near Apollo, yes.
Yeah, you forgot Tarzan. Ethically, I think we need to be very careful. I mean, I would love to see it as a park, but right now it's under contract and we have to look at what they do, what they present to us, and judge it fairly. I'm like Sarah, I have a problem with getting rid of our recreation conservation land. But that being said, I think we need to be careful.
Well, we just, really, at this point, our hands are tied and our hands are tied anyway in a lot of ways. But right now, it's under contract and we need to see where that goes. And I think something, I don't know. I'm going to say something I don't know anything about. I'm just simply going to say that I don't think it's going to be under contract forever. So with that, city attorney, can you speak to us on number one, the bond referendum?
Yes, I see.
Yes, I'm sorry. There you are. You've got the longest name on there.
Yes, I understand what the community is working toward and understand that everything is under contract. We can't... But my concern is the density that any developer wants to go in there and... put in there. And that's the key for me because if we can control the requirement of density and if we control that, we may have an opportunity to control other things. So density is my issue. And I know that they always throw taxes or, you know, getting, bringing in more. But once you, if you do that and you put a whole lot of apartments and houses and small houses, zero land lots, by the time that they file for home exemption, you have dissipated all of your tax. So density is my issue. And as we move forward and get these things resolved, we still, as far as I'm concerned, we're going to have to settle the argument of how many families we going to put in that place. And I think that that will bring a whole different argument to the table if we focus in on that. That's my thoughts behind that.
Good thoughts because every time it does come up, the density and the traffic studies and all that go with that are, I really can't say what I think, but I just, they're a problem. We'll leave it at that. Member Cole.
Yes, while I agree with the open space and the pitfalls that we have at this point, as been mentioned earlier, that the land is on the contract. And nothing has been submitted to the city for our review. Now, to Vice Mayor Robinson's statement about density, I think we have, we can control that if something moves beyond that. But I think that the statement that is made in number six is a very general statement. And I can't, I mean, why would we not help the citizens do that? So it doesn't say, it doesn't require us to do anything but to assist the citizens in trying to acquire Royal Oak. Now, we can help them to acquire Royal Oak, but I can't see anywhere in the stars that we can afford as a city to pay whatever price it is to purchase Royal Oak. We can assist in getting whatever grants that are required. But I can't, I can't see anywhere where we could actually go out and buy Royal Oak.
I don't disagree. Okay. Back to city attorney, on the, explore the possibility of a bond referendum. What might be the pitfalls for that and what would be the, your legal terms on that?
Well, I think to get in that discussion, it'd be important first to determine what it is you want to do. You know, what's your goal? I did hear speakers refer to the trails and getting parts of those properties to do the connectivity, which depending on the properties involved could involve maybe negotiating easements for that purpose or are you really going to purchase the properties? I've heard do bond referendum to develop the properties and maintain the properties you have. And then there's also discussion about purchasing properties. So I think the first thing council would need to know is what is it you're trying to achieve? Because first, you need to identify that. And then whether it's a public purpose and then something you can do bonds for. Of course, these would be general obligation bonds, which would require a referendum. In order to do that, of course, you have to have a paramount public purpose. So that goes back to identifying the purpose of the bond monies. Once you determine what you want to do, then you can maybe identify the amount of bond money you would need, which is the second thing you would need to do. Because if you're going to do a referendum, you have to have the dollar amount. You're talking about the millage. You're talking about how long you're going to bond it for and the purposes associated with that. I know it was brought up earlier about to 2004, which is about 20 years ago, we did the previous bond referendum. And of course, the council at that time had time and they appointed a riverfront referendum committee, I think it was five individuals. And they researched the purpose that would be behind buying the properties, which properties you would purchase and for what purpose. And then the values of that properties to determine the amount of the referendum, which I believe was $10,333,000. So they did a lot of background research for council and brought a report to council. That took, I'm just going to ballpark, probably took three months of work for that committee and bringing it to council to get that done. So if council is interested in a referendum in this election for a particular dollar amount to do something, whether it's purchase properties or store properties, you have to have that done by August. And you have one meeting in June. So you will run up against a practical problem of whether or not you can do a referendum by that time. I'd also recommend if council's going to have that discussion about what it is you want to do, potentially we could get bond council involved, research that as far as being a paramount public purpose. Is it buying property? Is it maintaining existing properties you've already purchased? Or is there an alternate avenue, if you don't have time to do a bond referendum, of acquiring easements and negotiating with the county or other property owners to create that connectivity? And what would be the cost associated with that? So I'm just saying that number one is, I won't say a loaded question, but there's a lot of moving parts there to what it is you want to achieve and the time you have to achieve it. So I think that's worthy of more discussion before you can make a decision.
Oh, Member Stokel.
Yep. So for this one, I feel like how I, just given our timeframe, it's hard to say what I would want our initial outcome to be until I know what properties are even available. So I know we purchased a lot back when this originally happened, as was mentioned. City owns some of it, county owns some of it, and then there's private property owners that, there's already existing businesses there. So I think as a first step, I would be, I would like to see what land and property is available for even like purchase right now that's vacant. I think that.
Have staff come back with something like that?
Yes, I think that would be a first thing because if there's like one piece, I'd be like, okay. But if there's multiple, that, I think that would determine how I would see our future potentially being. I do think it's a tight turnaround for this election cycle, just depending on what comes back. But maybe something for 2026 because I think also what was mentioned, not only potentially purchasing, but also having funds to restore some of what's happening there, which I think would take a little bit of time as well. But I think as a first step, I would, that would be something that I would like to see. It's just what's available that we could potentially purchase and then kind of go from there.
I agree with that. And in my overview, and maybe that's what I'm hearing you say, is I like this idea. I would, I would like to look at, and I liked it back in 2004. I liked it then. I like it now. I think that if you drive up and down U S one because of 2004, we have more view of the river than, and across the river. And we see the sunrise more than most people in the county.
Yep.
So I liked it then. I like it now. I, again, agree that perhaps, you know, we can certainly get a staff report on what's available and take a look at it. We can certainly try to get this done within two meetings.
Right.
But if we don't, then I would also say that this, this, I use the word must like I can say that, but I think it would be a must, top priority, high priority to get that on the 16. Yeah, excuse me.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. That was 14, 16, 20, the next one.
Yep.
But I'd prefer to get it on this one if it's possible.
Yeah.
But I don't know enough about what's out there, what we're looking at. So I would ask that staff could put something together for us and get a realistic idea of can we get this done or can we not by August?
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's quick.
Yep.
But I like the idea. I'd like to see it happen. Uh, Member Nelson.
I like the idea. I was sort of hoping we could get a report back on stormwater, the guy that was doing the, now I apologize my words.
Since you know what year it is, right?
I know what year it is. The stormwater report because I'm wondering if we should say riverfront property slash stormwater parks, because to me, that may be something we need.
I think maybe that's what staff can come back and help us define a little bit tonight. I think we just need to try to go over this list. And I think that at least what I'm hearing from the three people that have spoken is I think we like this idea.
Yeah.
We just got to, don't know if we have the timing to get it done in the next two meetings. But if we do, I like it.
Well, I, I agree. And I still don't think we can get it done for the election because if staff is going to do a study for us and if we run the same timeline that we did in 2004 with a committee putting together, I would say, I agree with doing it. I just don't think that we have the timeframe to get it done, to get it on the ballot.
If we don't, then at least maybe we can get the wheels on it moving forward.
Agreed.
So let's see where we can do with that. Vice Mayor.
Yes, and I too think that we have a beautiful waterfront. And I want to do our best as we govern to keep it that way. But as staff, my concern is the tax issues and the administrative issues of getting dollars to purchase the property. So in the process, we can find out that the properties are available. But even before we go to the citizens of our community and say we want to do this, we have to be able to explain to them in detail what it will cost them out of their I think that we have, our shoreline has gotten to the point that it has been washed away to, it's not that much left. And I don't think we have a great fear of too much being built upon it, but we want to stop it where it is. But in the process of doing that, we need to make the right decision with all of the information. As someone told me in college, you know, you do a force field analysis on it and the pros and cons. And let us evaluate it in the front of the community and say, we want to keep our city beautiful, we want to keep the waterfront, but this is the sacrifice that we have to make to do that, day by day. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more point.
Yes, Member Cole.
If we're going to study it, and you know, Machiavelli said about a trail, maybe we need to, if we can add that and also look at that as a part of our staff report. And, you know, come up with a total value. So when we go back, if we do a bond issue, we'll know exactly what we're talking about. And we'll be able to delineate it and sell it to the public so we can get it passed.
Sure. And there may be things you could do if the bond doesn't work, you know, other things to be evaluated, such as easements or maintenance or other things could be fleshed out in that discussion. So you probably want to get as much information as you can on, on all of those so you understand the options you have.
Okay. I'm going to skip two to go because I think the other ones are a little simpler. So let's go to three. Recommend city council institute a moratorium on granting variances, artificial synthetic vegetation, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know the ins and outs and specs on all of that, but I definitely lean, yeah, let's, let's do that. As you're speaking at the people who spoke on that, I'm just shaking my head as hard as I can. We don't need, as somebody said, we don't need more plastic. You know, I know that, and there's more to it than what I'm saying here, and that's why we're going to need to maybe hear more. No more artificial turf, et cetera. I think somebody, I think Laura Lee noted that the city approved it for two people, then there's more. So you want to give me a little rundown on where we stand with that sort of thing?
So we've already prepared an agenda item for your next meeting, requesting advisability to take a look at artificial and synthetic vegetation, the actual ordinance itself.
Member Stokel.
Yep, that's what I was going to say is, rather than singling out just B A A, I feel like if we're going to do some type of moratorium, it would need to be overall. And then I would like more information just because I think one of the cases, I know like the person, their child was allergic to grass and it was only a little strip. So I don't want to be like, oh, no, you can't do that. Like, so I would like a little bit more information. I think we all have gone through the plastic plants. But I also want to be mindful of if there, what that would look like and how we could implement something, I think universally for the whole city, rather than just focusing on B A A. And so I'm happy to hear that we already have an agenda item. So I think that one's settled.
And that one's coming at us, so that's, we don't need to spend a lot of time on that since we're going to have a next.
No, it's, it's simply advisability to council if you would like for us to take a look at it and we have a normal staff report for you.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll hold on that one.
And I agree. I just want to follow up on what Member Stokel said is, when you have that agenda item, I think council can decide then whether or not you want to do a moratorium on the use of synthetics while you're developing codes that may address that. And if you do a moratorium on approvals permitting associated with those synthetics, it would capture your variances as part of that. It would be a, and then any moratorium would, you know, be for a temporary basis, six to nine months or whatever you determine is appropriate while you're evaluating those codes for any changes. So you could certainly have that discussion at your next meeting.
And as you recall, the golf course moratorium that we imposed on all the golf courses in the city, as we were looking at that particular ordinance, we did have a moratorium in place for redevelopment of golf courses.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I truly think moratorium is probably not the right word, but what I do believe is that every, every plant, every weed is probably some type of nutrient or food for some type of species. And when we, as we give the staff direction on this, we should always take that. I don't think artificial turf or synthetic grass feeds any living species. It may make man feel good for a moment while he is walking on it or looking at it. But everything that is candy for the eye is not good for the soul. All right.
All right, anything else on the, as I put it, artificial turf moratorium? And I know it's more than that. All right, number four is recommend city council request city of Cape Canaveral's chief resilience officer Zachary Eichholz present the next city council presentation's meeting. I don't know a lot about that. Member Stokel, do you know anything about that?
No, I don't know. I will say, just thinking about, I do think, know several of the council members for Cape Canaveral. I know they're doing a lot of good things there. I also know that they're about two miles and we're over 34. And they also have a lot of hotels and stuff where they're, they get funds from their small area to do some things. I don't know how much green space they have compared to how much we do. And I have no doubt they're doing great things. I think what was interesting to me, and I'm open to it, it's just kind of, I don't know, it's kind of, it makes me think of like working in the workplace, hey, we're going to go bring in somebody, somebody else, come over and tell us what to do. I don't know. It just kind of was a little strange. I'm open to talking to him. I'm open, I, again, I'm friends with several of the council members, talking with them. I don't know how you guys feel about inviting someone.
Isn't that where Wes Morrison is?
Mm-hmm, it's exactly where Wes is, yep. And they are, like I said, they are doing great things. I, I don't, I just don't know what that would look like if he's getting paid. Do we pay him? Is Cape Canaveral paying him to come do a presentation for us? Do we want to maybe have our sustainability officer here that works for us do a presentation on what we're doing? I don't know. I'm open. I just was, that one caught me a little off guard.
Yeah, I think your point's very well taken. A couple of things. First of all, I always wanted, you know, you go to football coaches' clinics all the time just to see how somebody else is doing it better. I have no problem with that. In this case, it's certainly a little bit different. I remember when Wes Morrison was elected mayor there. Wes actually is a former football player and wrestler of mine. So to see him elected mayor was kind of crazy. But at the same time, I remember watching their results come back and I think he won like 278 to 170. back, and I think he won like 278 to 172. I mean, it was like, where are the people? It's not a very big place. It's very different than ours. I would, I would say for me, I'd like to, I can't imagine, we can't see this person's presentation before we get into inviting someone here.
Sure, we we could ask if if he would provide it to us, and we'll get it to you.
And then the second thing is, I agree also that it's a little bit awkward to have someone who's doing the same job ours is, and not give our guy a chance to explain. I'd like to at least look more into that. Like I said, I go to coaches' clinics, because everybody has something that I don't know. And I'd like to hear this guy, and it won't hurt me at first to hear him, either on a video or audio, whatever it may be. And then from there, talk to our folks, too. But I'd like to move forward with it. Again, you go to clinics to learn things, and I think that we can learn something from the Cape Canaveral guy, whether it's smaller or whatever. Let's see what he's got to to say. Anything else, Vice Mayor?
Yes, my thoughts, I guess I'm thinking a lot tonight. Member Stokel and I sit on the League of Cities for a reason, to communicate with the leaders of the other cities. And I think one of the steps that we ought to take is sitting down and just talking with the League of Cities and do a, do a, you know, when people doing presentations, they're trying to show you something. And sometime when you sit down breaking bread together, and you're asking the right question, you get a better answer. And it's really to be looked at the size of the city. And so being that my cohort to my left sits at the front table, you know, once a month, and she waves at me at the at the other table, I'll, I'll ask, you know, maybe she and I can come up with some, some direction before we make too many moves on. I think it's a wonderful idea. But I would suggest that, because you may find some good information coming out on why they doing the things that sometime people do good, the thing, the way that they do them, because that there are no other ways of doing them. My thoughts.
So I I think that that's a reasonable move. Let's investigate, not investigate, but let's listen to this guy and 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 hear him on video and see what he does, but at the same time, talk to our guys. And I like the idea of going through League of Cities there and and having that communication. Number, number five, recommend city council allow member, members who are unable to be present for TEC meetings to attend and vote virtually. Staff, whoever may be able to give us something, what are some of the concerns about moving in that direction?
The one concern I would have, and I think they understand that, is you cannot create a quorum that way. You have to have a physical quorum present for your meeting. So as far as legally, that would be one of my concerns, is making sure they have a physical quorum, so you don't have someone virtually trying to create a quorum.
Yeah, and I realize that. I've been to meetings where that doesn't, you know, you can't do that. I think that's, that's certainly an issue, but I don't think that's the one they're looking at. They're looking at the fact that they want to participate. I get that.
Right, that's the one legal concern I would make sure everyone understood. The other, of course, and I don't think TEC gets into quasi judicial items, but there's always a concern with evidence and trying to view evidence and make quasi judicial decisions for those boards that do quasi judicial items. That can get very tricky when you have someone trying to appear, and and some of the, the planning that has to go into that. So those would be some things I would consider.
I remember during COVID, that was a problem for us sometimes, where we're in the quasi judicial, and some evidence is present, and it's passed down the table. But we obviously, we all took turns not being able to be here.
But I don't believe TEC handles many things in the quasi judicial realm.
City manager, or is there anybody there can tell me technically, what are technologically, what the concerns might be?
We we learned a little bit during COVID. There were still challenges with the the phone in and the and the the users on the other end. I think you, you know, the long pause and delay and all that kind of stuff in talking. But logistically, it's possible, yes.
I I would say, and that's absolutely true. It certainly was true during COVID. And we still have somebody who zooms, not zooms, comes in virtually to economic zone meetings. And there are, you know, everybody takes a vote, and about three or four seconds later, they'll, aye. So it's, it's kind of awkward. But with that said, I I personally don't, don't see why in, you know, this, this technology age, why we can't make a run at it. And, you know, see if, you know, and like Mike said, it might not be, by matter of fact, I can tell you that when I was out one time, I think it was COVID. I didn't even feel like being, you know, I couldn't even, you know, get on the thing. So the point I'm making is, you won't always have that. You will have your, I'll call them backup alternate, you'll have your alternate. So my feeling is that if it can be done technologically, you deal with the delay. We did here, we, if if I wasn't here today, or somebody wasn't here today, I think we'd have the option of of calling in. It would be, it is awkward. For some reason, we just can't get the timing, being it's like you're four or five seconds delayed. But I I would like to see us try to make that happen. Member Stokel.
Yeah, and to your point with that, we have done that in the past. I remember, I think we had one council member, they had to attend, I think, a work conference, and we were voting on something important. This was probably seven years ago or so. And they ended up calling in. And I guess the way I view it, it's more of a exception, like it's something we do if we have to, but not a rule. And I think that would be my only fear. Like, I would, I tend to be leaning more toward allowing that if it was just like a one time thing. I guess I have, my concern is that it will be for several months, and we already have two members. And I don't want to set a precedence of that is like the standard or the norm, and then other boards potentially wanting it. And then to Member Nelson's point, I I still do feel like that's the kind of the point of the alternates. The flip side of that is, I feel like we all can agree, we have a very knowledgeable and informed and passionate TEC that wants to be involved. So I don't, and I I don't like to squash that either. And I I like, I would like to see that, yeah, it's tough, because I I would want to see those voices at the table. But at the same time, I also want to keep the same level of, like, you come into the meeting, you're participating, and it's not something that, it's for multiple months, I guess. That's kind of where I'm a little bit conflicted.
And again, I I don't disagree that that could be a problem. I remember Stan brings it up all the time, but I was talking to the FWC and somebody else, oh, a a state senator that I'd gotten about the manatee issue. It was driving this all crazy. It was terrible. And boy, I was, I was zoomed in, and man, I won't tell you that I was technologically sound or whatever it was, but I ended up, because they couldn't hear me, and I did the mute, I got that part right, whatever it was, they couldn't hear me. So I'm texting to our state senator person and giving my questions and answers via text. Now, the point I'm making is, I still think that it's worthy of trying. And, you know, technologically, if it's a problem, we try to make it work better. And, you know, I would assume you guys will deal with how it works, good, bad, or ugly. So I, again, I I don't really see a real downside, except that it may not be as convenient as being there. And I agree, the alternates are there as needed. But I also agree, and I know this to be fact, that the alternates participate in TEC on a regular basis more than any other that that I've I've seen. So, Member Cole.
I I kind of don't agree with it. And my rationale is similar to what Member Nelson said, and that is, if, when we're looking for alternate members, why would I want to be an alternate member if I could never be a voting member? Because if someone's not there, they can do it by Zoom. I I I'm speaking from a personal perspective, that I would never apply to be an alternate member if I could never have the opportunity to sit up and be involved. And I think that's what may happen with this. While I understand the concept and understand why we would want to do it, but I'm, I'm not in favor of it.
Member Nelson?
I was sort of thinking that if we do it, that maybe we should put a time limit on it. You can miss, or you can appear virtually, or zoom in X number of meetings per year, only if you're out of town, so that, you know, we do have, the alternates do have a chance to be fully active participating members. Does that work?
Get compromised with my, I think my issue is.
Yeah, I think I'm okay with that, too.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I guess, again, I have to rely on my military days. And if I have a, if I'm the commanding officer of a ship, a destroyer, and I have an executive officer, a second in command, and if I can't leave without him taking charge and being in command, I don't need an executive officer. And that's the way that I feel about alternate. We choose alternates based on their ability and their desire to perform the task. And if they feel that they can perform the task and do the job, that's their second in command. And when they leave, when the first in command is leave for whatever reason, that's the time for the second in command to step up and do the job.
Member Cole.
Well, while I didn't think the Coast Guard was part of Department of Defense, I agree with, I agree with Vice Mayor Robinson, because that's the way the military works. And, yeah, I understand that. Okay.
I, I get that we don't have alternates at this level, and I'm not sure how it works on the, the environmental commission, excuse me, economic commission. But I I just know that if we, one of you guys weren't here today, they'd be willing to, you know, zoom you guys in via phone. Now, I sometimes don't think it's worth it. I've tried it, and every now and then, it's like, it's just not worth it to me, because it's gets so discombobulated. But, you know, we have the right that if we weren't here, we say, hey, I'm sick, I'm whatever, I'm whatever, call in, and they do that for you. I tend to think, for me, the way it's always worked for me, it's always kind of a cluster. But I don't think that that shouldn't be allotted for someone else as well. I do understand the assistant part or the, the, the backup, the, anyway, the guy that's stepping up, I I agree. I mean, same thing in coaching, same thing in football and all that stuff. But there is something to be said for having the, I mean, in this case, we're talking about the, you know, the vice chair, and a very valid and valued input. I don't know, I could even go with having them be part of it, and maybe the 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 backup person votes based over there. I don't know, I just think we need to try it. I don't think we need to just not do it. Member Stokel?
Yeah, going back to you, I remember back at the Florida League of Cities, we were discussing this issue a lot, especially post COVID. And I remember it getting brought up from some of the smaller cities and some of the cities that have a lot of snowbirds. And I think their issue was not being able to make quorum. And I think that's, I would venture to say, I don't know for certain why we did get some of the changes we did in the state legislation to allow it to a certain extent. And I, I think that's where I go back to, I think I'd feel a little bit more open to it if we were in a situation like that. But I feel like we have a very strong TEC, and I feel like we have knowledgeable, willing participants wanting to be a part of that board. And I think that's where I kind of get a little bit of a pause. If we have those members that are wanting to step in, that can be there, I, I don't, I go back to Vice Mayor, like, you're there for a reason, and I feel like you should be there. And I don't know, that I I know it's not probably, that that's just kind of how I feel about it. I would like you to be there. And if you can't be there, let an alternate step in and be there.
All right.
I think we're clear as mud right now.
Well, I don't, I think we we're very clear, but it's, it's a very complicated situation in that, and I can hear what everybody's saying. I don't see any confusion at all. It's ultimately going to decide, do we want to allow the virtual vote, or do we want to have the alternate do that? And ultimately, when we get down to voting on this one, that's what it'll come to. But I think that we've got, I think it's pretty clear where we're at. As a matter of fact, you guys helped me see where the dividing lines are. So and we already talked about six, but that bottom line, and we definitely want to, you know, help with the Royal Local Movement. And I think that city manager and city attorney meeting with who they met with this past week or so says just that. And if they didn't meet with them, I wouldn't know what I know now, except I did meet with some of the public that was very informative, because they've also met with those kind of folks. And so I I definitely think we want to do our best to help move forward with that. Member Stokel.
Yep, I think, jumping back to item two, because we didn't discuss that one, I had for that one, I.
Wait, that's where we're going next. I want to get all these behind us.
Okay, I thought we were.
Behind us, and now we're going to let you kick off number two.
Okay, you ready?
Mm hmm.
Okay, so I feel like for this one, looking at it, I, to me, and I don't know if you guys agree, I would, I like these items being in there. I think the only thing that I would like to make it a little bit clearer is, they would assist city council to ensure the city does X, Y, Z, like, all of those things, because I, I think they're needed, because those are the requirements of a tree city USA. And I don't think that if it reads without putting in there, you're assisting the city council, it looks like TEC is going to have a tree ordinance, and the TEC doesn't do a tree, we do the tree ordinance. So I would just like to add that and keep what they put here, and just say, TEC will assist the city council to ensure the city takes care of these items. That's my thinking on it.
Member Nelson?
I agree. I think that's a great idea.
I agree.
Now, that's, that would, that's an ordinance. So if, in your discussion, if you're going to give direction or advisability to move forward, it would be to come back with an ordinance with those changes, because to incorporate in that code, it would have to be an ordinance.
I think that that's not a bad idea at this point. I, I think there's been some gray area and unclear, you know, we're not real clear sometimes on, and this has been a good communication, at least for me it has, on on what's there and what's not. So I would think, come back with an ordinance, is that what we're looking for? I would say.
If that's council's desire, then it would be direction to come back with an ordinance to incorporate some language under that subsection.
You want a motion?
Well, I will, but I'm going to go, starting with number one, and we're going to go down the line. Okay, come back with ordinance. What will that say exactly? What, come back with ordinance?
I believe, and I will speak for Member Stokel, but I, those four items are, are the standards for a tree city. So if you put them as the duties, it could be maybe misunderstood, or that those are the duties of TEC to do an ordinance, to spend the money. But I believe what Member Stokel said is, if you want to identify that these are the four standards of a tree city, and that TEC would be involved in, in making recommendations on these standards, or, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think that's where you were coming from. And you could, we could come back with an ordinance with that sort of language for your consideration at your next meeting.
Okay, there you go. All right, so let's bounce up to one, the referendum on riverfront property. I think that we, I'll speak for myself, I'm clearly for this, I think most of you are. But I think there's a concern with the time that we have for to get this done, and we'd like to have some information back from staff on what's available, what's the cost. We got to get some, some facts and stats before we can say, yeah, let's do it. But I know this is what we want to get done. I think it's a great idea. So with that, I'm not sure how we work it, where we go.
I'll take a stab at the motion.
Are you really?
I, yeah, I am, really. I'm not too old, you know?
Okay, here we go.
I recommend that staff explore the possibilities of a bond referendum to purchase the undeveloped properties along the Indian River Lagoon. In addition to that, that once, I guess it has to be a two step thing where we, you come back with the recommendation, and then basically, we would appoint a committee to do it, like, similar to what was done in 2004. So I guess my recommendation would more or less be that staff come back with the possibility, look at the lands, the land that's out there, the private land, the public land, the county land, and so we can determine what's there, and if if it's at all possible to have some sort of assessed value.
By August.
Have, by, by August, to let us know if it's a possibility.
And that would be our motion for tonight, and when they come back, we'll.
Question. I would second it, but I have a question. Are we going to include potential stormwater parks if? Are we going to include potential stormwater parks if appropriate?
Not for this, you mean for additional, in the bond issue?
Right.
We didn't discuss that. We discussed that down at the Royal Oak one, but not in this one. This one was just the referendum to buy the property, right?
Wasn't the Riverwalk in that one?
Yeah, Riverwalk, yeah, whatever other things that we could put in, but the stormwater was not in that particular one.
Then I would second.
Thank you.
As part of that, does council want us to contact bond council, maybe get some information from bond council on types, timelines, things that would be involved?
Absolutely.
If you want to go in that direction, and, and things that potentially would constitute a public purpose, whether it's maintenance versus purchase, things of that nature.
Yes.
Yes.
We're going to need that to see if we can move forward, especially by August.
Thank you.
Motion by Member Cole, and second by Member Nelson, roll call, vote.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Passed unanimously. We would like to look into referendum of buying riverfront property. Number two, we got that, or somebody, I guess, give me a motion on that, we need to come back with the ordinance.
Move to approve advisability to come back with a ordinance, including the changes that Stokel made, Member Stokel made, regarding the powers and duties of the TEC.
Second.
Got a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Member Stokel, roll call, vote.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Passed unanimously. On number three, do we want to move forward on a vote here, or just basically say, hold till next meeting, when they're going to bring this back to us? What do you think? Member.
I make a recommendation that we hold on this until we have more information to make a decision.
I don't need to table, I think they're coming back next meeting.
So you want to just table it? Okay, I recommend that we table it until the next meeting.
How about, since we're, we are bringing advisability to your next meeting?
Okay.
That you make a motion to have us bring advisability.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there you go, thank you. I got a motion from Member Cole, a second from Member Nelson, roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Passed unanimously, passes in that we're going to have it come to us next week. Number four, Cape Canaveral, I think where we came with that was, we want to see their, his presentation, and you guys are going to talk to League of Cities. Is there anything we really need to make a motion on there, or just?
Yeah, that one's.
Sure, if you want us to get the presentation to you, and then suggest that the two members of the League of Cities interact.
I'm saying that. Move to have the city provide us with information.
Presentation.
Presentation from Zachary Eikoff, and to have the Vice Mayor and Member Stokel have further discussions.
So we're just providing you the presentation, we're not inviting Mr.
Right now, right now, I mean, let's get familiar with where they're at. We may jump up and down and say, we got to have this guy next week. Or we may say, we'd like to talk to our guy and have him look at this, and I, yeah, I definitely want to move forward and get that information. All right, so I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Now I have a second, roll call, vote.
To clarify, who seconded that?
Member Cole.
Okay, thank you for that. We have Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Pass unanimously, we will get that video of his presentation, and we will pursue
where we go from there. TEC virtual, put that wording somehow that you guys had it before.
Move to allow a TEC member to attend a limited number of votes or meetings virtually and vote. If they, okay, you guys try it.
You're a lawyer.
Member Stokel.
What are we doing?
I think we might not fully be in agreement, because I feel like we said maybe limited, and then we had discussion about letting just the alternates do it. So I feel like, honestly, kind of where I landed is, just to keep it as it is, let our alternates, and if we're having issues not making quorum, I would then want to revisit it.
Okay.
I checked it there.
Okay. So my motion would be to keep the TEC meeting rules as they are allowing the alternates to fill in for regular members that are not present, and if we are having issues, meeting quorum, to then revisit the issue. That would be my motion.
Just to be clear, you cannot use that to make a quorum.
Right.
They couldn't call in to make a quorum, I just want you to understand that.
Correct, yes, but I just wanted to be clear, that we could revisit if we're having issues, if we needed to change rules.
All right, so, Member Stokel has a motion to basically leave it as it is. And, Member Nelson, seconds, roll call, vote.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
No.
And Vice Mayor Robinson.
And I just want to clarify, I just think that the virtual option should be on the table. And apparently, in the motion, it's not on the table, so I'm a no.
A Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Passed as five to.
Four to one.
Four to one. No, five to one. Four to one. Four to one. Stand, be quiet, please. All right. Next one on the, on the golf, I think that we all agree, we'd like to, to help out, and again, I use city manager and city attorney's meeting with a, what would that company be called?
Trust for Public Land.
Trust for Public Land Company. And I think that we would do anything we can there. At this point, though, we are under, they are under contract, and everything's kind of on hold. So I would say, Member Stokel, or?
Yeah, I'd say, move to have staff work with citizens and support citizens as, as needed, understanding that we are currently, the property is currently under contract, which, to me, they're already meeting with the citizens, so I would like them to continue to do that and be open to have that, but obviously, kind of, a little bit on pause.
Second.
Yep.
Motion, Member Stokel, second, Member Cole, roll call, vote.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Passed unanimously. Those, that's why I was writing that. So our six points are there. TEC, I do, we do, I do appreciate the amount of work you put in that, and yes, it comes back as a summary, but I think we're all more informed than we've ever been before. And I appreciate that very, very much. City Manager.
Onto petitions and requests.
Petitions and requests from the public, please. This is your time. All right, Laura Ward, we're ready now.
Okay, I forgot what I said.
But we got you.
I just want to, before we get to that, I just want to say what a difference 20 years makes. I was one of the citizens that came in in 2004 and asked the council to put a referendum on the ballot, to ask the citizens if they would agree to tax themselves to purchase riverfront. And they were 100% against it. They fought us tooth and nail. We had to go out and gather the petitions and force them to put it on the ballot. And of course, it passed with a 70, 80.
One of the best things that ever happened.
And it's one of the best things that ever happened. And it's like, the, just things are different at different times. So thank you all for being, doing what you're going to do. So you heard what I had to say, I'm just asking if you would give me a chance to give you a total picture of what went on there, so you can make a proper decision. And that's what I'm asking.
And how's that work, city attorney, to allow that, other than petitions and requests? And do we make an agenda item out of that?
Just let me bring it to them again.
You had an agenda item, if council decides they want more information and want to look at that, you, you can tell the city manager to create an agenda item to do that, or if you think that's appropriate, if you want to have more information.
Member Stokel.
Yep, and I spoke with Laura about this, and I am open to it. There were some things that I feel like I didn't fully know, and I told her, quite frankly, I said, I'm all in favor of it, but my decision might stay the same.
That's fine.
Right, and so I'm okay with her, she did not know about the meeting, and I would like to have her give the chance. She, she has a lot of history with the city.
Very sincere.
And I know she, she was there, again, as part of that, and I would like to hear it. And again, my decision might stay the same, but I would like to be a little bit more informed on it.
Member Cole.
Yes, I too talked with Laura, and I, I told her what her options were as far as trying to get it back on the agenda, and I too would like to hear what you have to say. And like Member Stokel said, my decision may be the same, but at least I'll be more informed about it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would agree.
Sure, so if council decides today, you could do a motion to reconsider, it was on your agenda before, and you decided to take no action, so you could do a motion to reconsider that item and to put it on the next agenda, if that's your desire.
I would like, I guess I can say that, I would like to see that happen. Go ahead, somebody want to make that motion?
Move to reconsider the naming of park across from Elencita.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Passed unanimously, we will.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Next up.
Stan Johnson, I'm going to bring up again the same thing I brought up to you at the last meeting, the 5:30 meeting. So this has to do with, city clerk has to do with this, this sheet of paper right here that I gave you, and they already have it. Okay? So I have this, this sheet of paper, and I was trying to show you this sheet of paper, which has, which has over 100 problems that I would, I would fail the site plan for. And that includes numerous survey errors. So the, the issue is, is that, what I'm saying is that, is that, as a survey, which I'm not a survey anymore, I'm in for about 26 years, and is, is that I cannot imagine, well, let me say this, the city of Tidesville is completely on a different planet. So this little sheet of paper right here says, says that, that there's encroachment, survey overlaps, that I've shown to Mayor Diesel and Mayor Robinson and other people. And there's independent findings by city employees, Mark, Mark Jones and Brad Parrish, that the, there's a three-foot bust in Elizabeth, Elizabeth Avenue right away, there's the failure, there's a failure to recognize encroachments like overhead electric, and yet, the city of Tidesville is, has approved this survey, continuing to approve it with the construction of probably over half a million dollars' worth of improvements. And what I have seen is that the northwest corner is off two feet, and the northeast corner is off two feet, and it's going into another person's property. The southwest and the southeast corners are off four feet, and they're going into other people's property. So what I'm saying is that you guys are completely nuts. You're fruitcakes on this. So there's a, there's a little thing that I've, I've said about, you reap what you sow. Well, there's another quotation, it's, for your, for Mr. Robinson's, it's Jose 8:7, it says something to the effect, it says, "You have sown the wind, and you shall reap the whirlwind." What the heck does that mean, when you sow the wind? You're sowing sort of like nothing, or imaginary, or something like that, but you're getting, what you're getting is big trouble, can, can destroy you, the whirlwind. So this is what you guys have done. You've sown the wind, and you're going to reap the whirlwind. You reap what you sow. And I have no sympathy for you, none at all. You're on another planet. No, thank you.
Next petitions or requests.
Stella Lee, Coco, Florida, I'm here to talk about the right to clean water, and I first wanted to start off with where that began. It began with a 7 million gallon sewage bill at the end of 2020 and the beginning of 2021. And the reason why citizens went out of their way to do this right to clean water is because they had eroded trust with the local government and how things were being handled, or, as they would say, mishandled. There was a lot of events that unfolded around that timeframe, including the sewage bill, the Space View Park, dead fish in that pond, the Space View Park current situation, we have a situation with Cumberland Farms and the Sears Town Mall, where this could potentially help that owner. And there was other issues that had happened, like the PFAS issue, and, so I'm just reminding you of why citizens came forward. You had thousands and thousands of manatees perishing in their own backyard, and they felt they wanted to do something, they wanted to raise up and make a difference. I want to read to you a few things about what triggers the rights violation, because this has not been passed, the citizens' wishes and their votes have not been honored. Know the pollution must be in quantities potentially harmful or injurious to human health, native wildlife dependent on clean waters or water quality which may unreasonably interfere with the enjoyment of life, liberty, or property, including outdoor recreation, business interests, and property values within the city of Tidesville. This means the plaintiff must show that the activity at issue will potentially harm such life or liberty interests in some way. The defendant will likely have to show such harm was necessary in public interest and is being done in the least harmful way. Will this bankrupt the city of Tidesville? I know that was a concern that was voiced at the last city council meeting. No, even if the city was theoretically 100% negligent in its duties to protect water for the residents of Tidesville, the charter amendment would work in a way to ensure the city immediately corrects course, designs and adopts a better plan, and makes it future decisions with the right to clean water in mind. I handed out these summaries, so you can take a look over it, and what I'm asking, before my time runs out today, is that the three members who voted to continue suing the citizens that got this charter amendment passed and voted for, is that you stop suing the citizens and you reconsider your vote, and go ahead and pass that right to clean water amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Stella.
Christopher Childs, Enchanted Avenue. Gosh, the first thing I want to say is, I was at a county commission, the last, the last meeting, and, and there were some people that were thrown out or escorted out by, by officers for being rude or saying things that hurt someone's feelings, and, and I just want to say that they've never met Stan Johnston, and seeing that you, how you run the meeting here, and I really wanted to say thank you for the way that you run the meeting, and, and not throwing people out just for saying things that, that might be rude, considered rude by some people. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, I was taught in management school not to say that, because then, all you hear is that, and so any criticism I have after, after that, you won't hear, but.
Chris, best thing for me to do on that is no comment.
See? See, now he's not going to listen.
Go ahead, go ahead.
But, no, it's all right. But in 2020, there was a, there was a survey done of Americans of who loves chocolate. Only 73% of Americans love chocolate. And in Tidesville, over 82% of the people love clean water. So chocolate ain't got nothing on clean water. Thank you.
Now, how long did it take you to put that together? Now, how long did it take you to put that together? Next up. They're looking around.
Michael Majak, Alpine Lane. After the last city council meeting, listening to Councilwoman Jolynn Nelson, all I could think of was one word, balderdash. Who's gonna block up the stormwater going into the lagoon? I mean, that's a ridiculous idea. It's not even an engineering feasibility. What we do need to do is redirect that stormwater, so it doesn't go in the lagoon. Not by building a wall around it, but by putting it back in the ground where it belongs. Now, I came here to talk about clean water, and why we started clean water. And to answer your questions about how this is going to work, and how the city is not going to lose its shirt tails and coat pockets by spending money left and right. It's about making the city do the right thing, and follow the best scientific practices, and clean up after their spills, which right now isn't happening. All we pay is a fine. And that fine usually goes into fixing whatever caused the spill. But it doesn't pay to clean up the spill. It doesn't remove the harmful ingredients that we've added to the environment. So that's inadequate. And that's what this whole bill was about, justification. So that you guys can do the right thing for us. This is our water. This is our city. And you three are standing in the way of something that we voted to have, whether you like it or not. We've had attorneys approve this language, as you've seen already in court twice. We're on the right. We've brought in legal experts to write a state constitutional amendment. Guess what? Based on ours. A human right to clean water. That's what we need, and that's what we deserve. And if you're not up there fighting for us and our clean water, then you really need to think about stepping down. Because clean water is what work, our tourist industry is based on, our fishing industry is based on. These are economies that bring money to the city. They're not gonna want to come for dirty water. I wouldn't. Now, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I have something I do want to say. It's not that I'm against clean water. It's not that I'm against the right to clean water. We have a statute, and I was really hoping that Judge Holcomb, who I adored, would write an order basically explaining how to make the two, the statute and ordinance, fit together. And he gave us really no guidance. So, I know that as a layperson, that doesn't make any sense to you. But as an attorney, it makes sense to me. And that's, that's my problem. So it's not that I'm against clean water. I need some clarification on how to deal with this charter amendment and make it work.
You put it in the charter. It's very simple.
No, but you, you know, it's sort of one of those, we're either going to make it make sense now, or two years from now, a year from now, five years from now, we're gonna have to make it make sense. So, let's make it make sense. And then we go for it. But I agree with you that we need to start looking at not putting stormwater, freshwater in the lagoon. So I agree with you there. And I think the problem is, how do we get to that point? And to me, I need it to make sense when I get to that point, to get to that point. So, I don't know if that helps.
My understanding of case law is that you don't have a choice. Case law, according to our attorney, and what we've reported to two judges, and now to the appellate court, is that you have no say. You can vehemently oppose what the citizens vote for. You still have to honor it.
So in that case, the citizens in Orange County voted for it, and it was struck down by the DCA.
Yes, it was, because theirs actually provided a right of nature. Ours does not. We stripped that requirement, which is why we were in jeopardy of the state statutes. We removed that, so we wouldn't be in jeopardy specifically.
So Mike, I mean, I don't mind arguing this out with you, but I think it's something the DCA needs to come in and say, this is what, this is how it's going to work.
It's very clear. The statute is clear. What we put in the charter, the change, is utterly clear. And to say, or to indicate that it isn't, as an attorney, is unjust.
We're gonna hold on that. Member Stokoe.
Yeah, just to expand on that. So ideally, this would have all been resolved prior to it even being on the ballot. I think that we're in this situation, because when everything was submitted to be on the ballot, there was not enough time. Our city attorney went to try to get a judge to speak to it prior to the deadline for it to be on the ballot. Because we did not have enough time, that judge could not see it prior. He said, "Go ahead and put it on there, and if there's an issue with it, we will deal with it." Obviously, there was an issue. There is, we can disagree to disagree of whether or not we feel like this is legal, or if it's preempted by the state. I want to make sure, I feel like I have a due diligence to make sure that we do what is legal for all citizens, for the entire city of Tidesville, to do what's best for them. I can't speak for everyone, but I would venture to say we all want clean water. I, my question to you would be to know, if we, say we did put this in, can you please tell me what would change than what we're doing right now, with all the millions of dollars we're doing right now to invest in clean water? What, what would this do? So say this goes in tomorrow, now what is going to change, all of a sudden?
Long term?
Like, right now, like, this goes in?
Immediately?
Yes.
It would extend the length of the charter.
Okay, and then long term? Long term?
Long term, what's gonna end up happening is that it's gonna flow through our standards, our, our ordinances. And where we are doing things that are not in the best scientific interest of keeping the environment alive, keeping the water healthy and clean, then we're doing it the wrong way. And our ordinances should change. Because this needs to flow into our comp plan, and from there, clean water becoming the thing that's going to flow all the way through the rest of our ordinance.
Would you not agree that that's what we're doing now through all the?
I do not. I think what you're doing is standing in the way of the citizens' vote.
With all the ordinance changes that we have done to help?
With all the ordinance changes, this one thing.
What, what would, what would you suggest of something that we should have changed already?
Your vote against it, and allow this to be amended into the charter.
Okay, I don't think I'm done.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next up.
Kristen Lorti, Coco Resonance. And I have a couple of things I wanted to talk about. One of them is on the right to clean water. So, the citizens just aren't buying it. I mean, the objections that you guys raised, and the, and the last time that you talked at the last meeting, you're getting in the way of the citizens' will because of fears that you have and objections that you're raising, and well, what would it do? And what would it be different? All kinds of questions. And you referenced a private conversation in the last meeting, Member Stokoe, which I don't get. Just, just tell us who you talked to, so we can go find out. And if you want to ask a question, then let's get you back the, a real answer. But you guys, the three of you who have decided on this, are in the way of what the people want. One of you is at least not speaking up on it, Member Cole, to just say, you know, "Let's just run this out." But you guys keep talking about it, and you're digging yourself a bigger hole, because we're not buying it. So, that's what I want to say about that. The other, a couple of other things I want to talk about. One is, is that I would like to have an update on the public records. You guys said that you're gonna put the public records online on the April 23 meeting. You took a vote on that. There's no status on it. I would like a vote. The next thing I'd like to talk about is, is on the, one of your goals under effective governance, on your strategic goals and objectives. You guys have a goal to continue to broadcast advisory board meetings, expanding the broadcast when appropriate. Nothing, silence tonight on the TEC. The meeting the other, on the 30th, the April 30 meeting, not broadcast. You have this objective here, and yet, do you know what? It actually got removed from the city manager's performance measures in FY 2024. Did you even know that? Probably not. There's 68 performance measures. How many of them do you actually know? This has no accountability to it. Neither does the whole rest of the list. But, the broadcasting of advisory board meetings is something that we care about. Silence when I brought it up earlier. Nothing on the workshop that should be broadcast every year, so that residents have access to hear what's going on with your meetings. Silence on that. Another one you have is expanding methods to increase and enhance two-way communications. We don't have that in Tidesville. Do you know what I found out, just, just in the last week? Found out that your email addresses have been taken off, your contact information has been taken off of the city website. And do you know what you have? The city manager has in here that he wants to increase the contact us form submissions. So now you have to go to, a resident has to go to a contact us form, and someone actually did, someone reported online, it went nowhere. So how do you guys expect this two-way communication to happen? All we can do is just come to a meeting. We can't even find you outside of the meetings. You don't respond on Facebook. Your goals are only to increase your, your users on Facebook, your followers, but not to actually help us and communicate with us. So there's a real gap here between what the people want and what's happening. Thank you.
City manager, somebody comment on that, only because I get a lot of emails.
Yeah, me too.
I'm like, I'm not.
From people who have your, already have your email address.
I get, I get a lot of emails.
Help me, how does it work?
Far as, huh? So, I'm over here, we're good. We're going back and forth here. And I will say, if this is the Saturday meeting we were talking about, is that what you're talking about, that Saturday meeting?
That's one form of two-way communication. That was removed this year, in lieu of the survey, which you're about to bury. But yes, that was removed. That's one form of two-way communication.
I think the last time we talked, I said I kind of liked the face-to-face, but I didn't like that it was, if we did a really good one, 35 or 40 people. And I'd like, I wasn't overly pleased with the survey, meaning I'd like more people. And I said that two years in a row at the Saturday event, that we don't just represent the people who can be there at 10 o'clock in the morning on Saturday. We represent the people who are at the Little League ballpark, the bowling center, the soccer fields. And so I thought a survey would get that better. And it maybe did, because it was 600, how many was it? 600, that's good.
It was statistically relevant, survey.
So, well, whatever you want to say about that. I'm saying that what we needed to do was increase the participation of the input. And I think that's clearly from 30 to 600, it increased. I'm not pleased with that. I think we need more than that. But that's what that answer is there. So, all right. No? Okay, thank you. Yep, 600 is more than 30. And it's not more, as much as I want. I want more than 600. I think everybody here is gonna speak on petitions or requests. Thank you. Oh, here we go. Here we go.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Dunn, a lifelong resident of Tidesville. It's kind of serendipity that you're discussing all this. I'm very pleased that everybody seems to be on board with doing something about Royal Oak, and doing something about the water that's going, the stormwater's going into our river. It's just incre, that this, what I gave everybody is an article from Yahoo News this morning, it's talking about.
Yeah, you sent that.
And I appreciate you responding so quickly that the property is under contract, and that's why it's kind of a limbo.
Yeah, that's another email I got, by the way.
Anyway, just a quick note that this Royal Oak facility, turning it into something like a wetlands or environmental area, it's, it's, this is a forever thing. It's something our grandchildren's grandchildren can appreciate. So, it's important, I think, that we are prepared, if it does become available, to do something. And another consideration is, once you purchase this property, that's just beginning. It's gonna be very expensive to convert that. So, I'm sure the citizens are behind this, and I appreciate your all's support on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And yeah, thank you for the email, too. Next up.
Hi, guys.
Hi, hi.
Elizabeth Baker, Tidesville. Right to clean water, again. Thank you so much to two members that have voted for and with the people on this. And to everybody else, I really just don't get it. We've heard excuses, we've gone back and forth, we've pretended that we didn't know that this was the right for people and not to nature. What this would do is give somebody like the gentleman that owns the mall some teeth in order to hold the polluters accountable that have been polluting the water and the ground over there for 40 years. He might be able to move forward with that development that would be really good for this city. The other thing that it would do is restore some faith in our representatives. 82% of the people, 82. That's your job. Your job is to represent us. We spoke, now it's time for you to speak for us. Amend that charter, do what's right. You know it's the right thing to do. Thanks.
Thank you.
Maureen Wood, Port St. John. If you really thought that lawsuits over pollution could bankrupt the city, why have you done nothing to rectify this issue? You must know it could be proven. When the citizens tried to rectify, you've tried to keep it off the ballot. Couldn't do that. Said it must go on the ballot, and it passes by 82%. Then you sued the people to keep it off the charter. And when two judges said it must go on the charter, you decided it must go to a higher court, paid for with taxpayers' monies, whilst the same taxpayer has to rely on donations from the community to hire an attorney to defend what two judges have already determined. I wonder, and I worry, because I don't like this. And how long before national newspapers and TV stations are knocking on your door because of this injustice and absurdity? I don't think this will end well for the city council. Please reconsider, and join the mayor and vice mayor on their decision. Something is very wrong about this, and wrong is no man's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up. All right, city manager.
Onto consent.
Oh, she had a, she had a thought.
I'd like to giving everybody else a chance to speak. Tony Shifalo, Tropic Street. I would just like to point out that this is becoming sort of like the county council meetings that I watch on YouTube, where the woman on, on the council gets up and leaves the room when the public are speaking. And I'd just like to suggest to those of you who are polite enough to remain and at least pretend that you're paying attention to your citizens speaking to you, that I commend you for that. And I would like to just suggest that during the time that people have to only speak three minutes, I know it's kind of tough, and bathroom calls are urgent for some people sometime, but I just think it's extremely rude to get up and leave the room while it's the petitions where the people get a chance to speak to you. So I just wanted to get that off my chest. Thank you.
Tony, Tony. I just want you to know, so it's not real neat, but I write down what everybody talked about. Right to clean, a lot of right to clean waters. We had Kirk Point. Stan, you're the same one. But, yeah, there are right to clean waters, as a matter of fact.
That's very accurate.
All but, but a couple. But yeah, I, when you see me writing, I'm writing so I can remember what I heard. Laura Lee, see I write her name down?
Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, Mims. I'll change the subject a little bit. I wanted to let you know that there's an opportunity to look at the tapes of the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Citizen Oversight Committee meetings. There, I gave you the piece of paper. This one is from April 2024. We had five speakers. Two were speaking about oysters, no, two spoke about clams, one about oysters, two about seagrass. These are like, you know, scientists that have been doing research in the lagoon for many, many years, and every single speaker said that there's too much freshwater going into the lagoon, which is slowing the restoration efforts that Brevard County citizens are paying for. And this, I've showed this to you before, but I thought I would bring a reminder. This is, oh, yeah, this is the stormwater outfall at the end of St. John's Street, by the dusty rose. And you can see this huge brown water, this plume that's coming out of this culvert. You can see the, it's easy to see because we had this big algae bloom going on at the same time. So you can see the difference between the colors, between the river and the stormwater that's coming out of that culvert. So the Soral program has been really, really successful, and it's generated a lot more money than it was originally planned to do. Why not, instead of doing a bond, why don't we go for a half penny sales tax? And let the citizens decide whether these projects are important. You could put the lagoon acquisitions on the south end of town. You could also put the stormwater park concept, the collection of stormwater parks, that the member from the St. John's River Water Management District Governing Board said that is the only solution that's, that is, that is clear and doable for the city of Titusville. We can't dig a canal under I-95 to divert our stormwater to the west, like they are doing in the south end of the county where they already had existing canals. This, this could be an answer. And 30% of it would be paid for by tourists, not by residents. So you could let the tourists pay for it, and we would start out with a plan to spend what we think we are going to get, and probably ultimately, the same thing that has happened with the Soral money would happen to us. We would be getting more money than we had originally thought we were going to get, so we could keep adding projects, the same way we're doing with the Soral project. And so I think that that, that could be an easier way to do this. We can't get it done by this election, but we could do it for 2026. We'd have plenty of time to map out what we think we want to do. But I think that that's an alternative that would be good. And I appreciate the time that you guys spent talking about the TEC's recommendations tonight. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. I learned, I did too.
Can we, can I ask a question? So probably six, eight months ago, we went down to a presentation by St. John's Water Management down in Melbourne. And we were talking to the girl from the zoo, Olivia. And she was talking, yeah, she did a presentation for us. And she was talking about the freshwater in the lagoon and how it was impacting the seagrass and the clams. So Laura Lee, if we wanted to know scientifically what the impact is of freshwater on our river, would she be the person to ask?
No. I would go with B on this list that I handed you. Dr. Todd Osborne from the University of Florida's Whitney Lab, which is up where Marineland used to be. Marineland is still kind of a little roadside attraction there, but, but most of the work that's being done there is being done by the University of Florida at the Whitney Lab, which is over on the estuary side. Dr. Osborne, he is the one who found the 56 superclams in Mosquito Lagoon that all of the clam restoration that's going on in the Indian River Lagoon, the millions and millions of clams that are, that are going into the Indian River Lagoon restoration, they're all coming from 56 clams that University of Florida students located and saved. They actually saved the DNA of Indian River clams from going extinct, because it's a long story. But I would suggest that we invite Dr. Osborne to come, and he might even, he might even bring his sidekick, Blair Wiggins, along. And Blair is a very famous fishing guide that's had a lot of television programs, that is very deeply involved in the clam restoration in the river. And it could be entertaining as well as educational. That, that would be my recommendation.
I would love to do that. I don't know how you guys feel about it, getting a presentation from him. And I understand that it's not just us putting freshwater in the river, and it's not something that we can change overnight. But I think any time we get information is, is good. We need to check out that information. So how do you guys feel about inviting him to do a presentation?
You know, it certainly sounds like a guy, if Laura Lee recommends him, it sounds like a guy I'd like to hear.
I'm open to it, completely. Yeah.
So.
Do I need that as a motion? So I would move that we have Dr. Todd Osborne come and do a presentation for us. Maybe 15, 20 minutes.
That presentation's beginning.
Second.
Second.
I got a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Member Cole. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. We will look to invite him, staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want staff to invite him, or do you want me to invite him?
I don't know how that would work. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Them? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Laura Lee, if you have your, his contact information, you might want to share it.
Are we good now? City Manager.
Onto consent items A through I. City Council, are there any questions on consent for staff?
I see none.
City Council, do you want to pull any of the consent agenda items for further discussion?
I see none.
City Clerk, are there any cards for consent agenda items A through I?
Yes, sir, three cards.
Mayor, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Thank you.
Consent agenda item 8A, approve the fire department budget transfer request. Consent agenda item 8B, authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number 6, 2024, street naming for Riverwalk project. Consent agenda item 8C, authorize staff to issue work orders for the annual stormwater piping installation services, tree boxes, Hamilton Avenue, and Hollow Glen Drive baffle boxes. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the annual rate sufficiency review water and wastewater utilities. Consent agenda item 8E, approve the wellfield testing for PFAS settlement. Consent agenda item 8F, approve payment to Brevard County for Barner Avenue resurfacing. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the annual resurfacing change order to Massey Construction. Consent agenda item 8H, adopt Resolution Number 7, 2024, to authorize city staff to administer the boating infrastructure grant program. Consent agenda item 8I, approve Resolution Number 8, 2024, appointing code enforcement special magistrate.
All right. Counsel, any comments or anything? No? Call the cards, please.
Kristin Lordy.
Kristin Lordy, Cocoa resident. And as I discussed last time I was here, I like to improve the visibility of the consent agenda. I appreciate that the city manager reads the items, but the description of the items and the spending is not disclosed during the meeting. So there's over $2 million of spending that I added up that's occurring on the current consent agenda, and I'd like to read a few of the descriptions of the items. First item C, authorize staff to issue work orders in the amount of $896,000 for installation of tree boxes in the Grace Street, Brevard Street, City Hall and Commons basins, and $851,205 for installation of the Hamilton Avenue and Hollow Glen Drive baffle boxes, and increase the annual authorized amount for the annual stormwater and piping installation services contract to $3.5 million. Under the PFAS item, PFAS item is to approve the use of Alusha County Master Agreement Number 780, effective through February 3, 2025, with Pace Labs of Ormond Beach for raw water testing within the Area 2 and 3 wellfields in the amount of $59,796. Additionally, approve associated budget amendment. Item G, annual resurfacing change order number 2, Massey Construction, approve change order number 2 to the annual resurfacing contract to Massey General of Port Orange, Florida, in the amount of $431,441 to add additional streets utilizing funds provided during the mid-year budget process. Additionally, authorize the city manager to execute the change order. And item number H, to authorize city staff to administer the boating infrastructure grant program, authorizing Titusville Marina to enter into a 20-year commitment for maintenance and operation of the Marina facilities funded under this award, and authorize the city manager to sign the previously approved application to the boating infrastructure grant program and to administer the grant program funding, should funding be awarded. Item I, approve resolution, appointing Attorney Jennifer Nix of the firm Garganisi, Weiss, DeGresta, and Salzman as the replacement special magistrate for code enforcement hearings for the city of Titusville, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution. Those are the ones that I wanted to read. I'd just like to point out, as I pointed out to you last time, that Cocoa Beach does read the dollar amounts and the descriptions. It would make your city business much more visible to the public. I personally object to the large number of consent agenda items that are occurring throughout Brevard. This agenda has about 10 A through I. There's many agendas that have many more items on it than this one, and that's correct, many more. Nonetheless, the city business should be visible to the public so it's easy for them to find. Many people don't know that they have to write to the city clerk just to get the backup for this, but I should make sure that that's known. Until the city agenda items are put online, you have to write to this clerk to get this. And this is a few of the items for the public's benefit, so everybody knows. Thank you.
Thank you. Good timing. Jeez. All right, next card.
Yes, sir. Stan Johnston, and my apologies, he, when you go through consent, I will mention the, the items they want to talk on.
Sure.
It's A, E, and I for Mr. Johnston.
I think it's maybe E.
Start, Mel.
H and I, what I had, but, because I guess the H maybe looks like an A. All right. So, so especially, I'm sorry, I wish you wouldn't leave Kate. All right, because I'm going to share something with all of you, something. I'm a, I'm a grandfather now. And I want you to understand is that when, when somebody gives my grandson a lollipop, and he's three foot high, and I'm maybe six feet high, it's like giving me how many lollipops the same size? Any idea on that? What mathematically is, is that if you, if you take a, if you, if you take a cube, and it's only like one foot square, and then you double it like it's two by two, but two, it is eight times as much, eight times as much. So in other words, when you give my grandson a lollipop, it's the same as like giving me, six foot high, eight, eight. I'm talking especially to Mr. Robinson, because he was wondering about this four parts per, per trillion of four phosphates, 176. Look, it can look at this way or this way. So, so what's going on here is that, is that, is that when you have, what we had is, we had tested in Titusville, and it was advertised in the Guardian newspaper. That's not even local, the Guardian, 176 parts per trillion. And I made this sign up, and I asked you guys, would you please test the city of water for, for, for these PFAS, whatever they call them? And it was denied. It was denied by many people, asking to do it. Now you're, now you're going to go ahead and do it. But the thing is, it's, it's, when, when Mr. Robinson was talking about four parts per trillion, that's really tiny, 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 tiny. But you understand, it's like, when you have it in a little kid, and it's only one foot high, can you imagine the parts per trillion, the combination? It would be like the same as on a, on a larger person. And then if you get down to a miniscule part, when it's a fetus, it's a tremendous amount of concentration. Do you understand? I was talking about from, from three feet to six feet, that's eight times. And if you go microscopically to a fetus, you know, that's maybe a millimeter, that's tremendous amount of concentration. So I want you guys to wake up, everybody here in this room, wake up, that it's a serious issue when, when, when we're talking about pollution, biological concentration and so forth. Wake up, because our children are not like we think they are. They're, they're very tiny when they're, when they're just an egg. Thank you. Please understand it. Wake up. Thank you.
All right, next.
Stell Bailey, item E. Stell Bailey, Cocoa, Florida. I think what the previous speaker was trying to talk about is that children are the most susceptible to these environmental exposures because of their size and their weight, and because they're still growing, all of that stuff. I do want to agree with Member Nelson on her commentary earlier about any time we get information, it's good. And data drives decisions. We all know that it drives decisions on a state level, a federal level. That's how we were able to get drinking water standards down to four parts per trillion, because the science caught up, and it taught us that these chemicals are much more harmful at lower exposures. So I'm for this item E. I commend the city for moving forward with this action, for getting the testing. I did have a few questions, and they don't have to be answered tonight. I did notice that there were certain area wellfields missing in this testing data. I do know that one is because there's a partnership. I do get concerned about that. There's, there's the question of, you know, how many people are being served by that particular water with that partnership? Also, going back to the stormwater parks, this is a perfect example. If we're having to buy water from a different entity, like, I don't know if it's Farmington, Farmington or not, but that stormwater recharging the aquifer could help solve those issues. So another thing to kind of keep in your mind about the stormwater ponds that have been discussed here tonight, it could help in this particular situation as well. And then the last thing is about transparency regarding this, you know, the testing results. We'd really like to see those posted online. I think that helps really build the trust with the community, being able to have those directly. Pace Labs is wonderful. We've worked with them in the past. So I'm really excited to see the work that they do and coming into the city. And again, I want you guys to know how much you're appreciated for making this decision. It was courageous, and it was a good decision, and I think every citizen in this city is thankful and grateful to you for that.
Thank you. We do post those results, don't we, not? We always have. Thank you. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Member Nelson.
Move to approve consent agenda items A through, I think is I.
Aye.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Member Cole is the second. Member Nelson is the motion. Roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yeah.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Consent agenda passed unanimously. We move on to ordinance's second readings.
Onto item 9A, which is ordinance number 14, 2024, Economic Development Advilorm Tax Abatement Referendum. The city attorney will read the, this is your public hearing, this ordinance.
Ordinance number 14, 2024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, authorizing the calling of a referendum to determine if the electorate desires to authorize the city to issue economic development advilorm tax exemptions, providing for effective ballot results, severability, and effective date.
Florida statute provides that the authority to grant exemptions expires 10 years after the date of such authority was approved by an election. But such authority may be renewed for subsequent 10-year periods if each renewal period is approved in a referendum called for and held pursuant to that section. In November 1994, November 2004, and again in 2014, the electors of Titusville voted to allow such an exemption for new and expanding businesses that meet specific guidelines. The current authority to grant economic development advilorm tax exemption will sunset at the end of 2024. The city council may desire to submit to the electorate a referendum which will authorize the city of Titusville to continue to grant economic development advilorm tax exemptions. And Brad's here to answer any questions. And Brad's here to answer any questions on this, your public hearing.
Brad, you got any comments or guidance?
No, sir. Just I'll try to answer any questions you have.
This is pretty much an every 10-year deal, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Council, anything you want to add to this? Call the cards?
Yes, sir. Two cards. The first is Tony Shippalo.
Tony Shippalo, Tropic Street. First, I think you should have to raise 4,000 signed petitions from Titusville voters in order to get this referendum on the ballot. Then you'll really know how the citizens feel because you have to talk to 8,000 people to get the 4,000 signatures.
You're right.
And you really get ears full. Second, I believe I don't want the city of Titusville to continue to grant economic development ad valorem tax exemptions. New businesses, especially large space-age businesses, should contribute to the tax base from day one and contribute their fair share every year. Third, the language of the proposed amendment isn't clear to me, so I doubt it will be so clear to the average voter. For instance, it isn't clear just what type of business will get the exemption, nor does it lay out for how long or how much tax exemption. Also vague is the number of jobs needed to be created to be deserving of a tax exemption. In short, the ballot title and the ballot question, member Nelson, to be used for the referendum is incomplete, so the poor voter will not know what in the heck they're voting for. It's not in the best interest of the citizens of Titusville that the city have the authority to grant said ad valorem tax exemptions in certain situations or any situations without input from the citizens. So I don't like the idea that you're going to just put it on the ballot without raising those signatures, 4,000 of them.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I was an employee of the city of Titusville, and here's what I found out that is very disturbing from a, here's what I found out is that, reporting from somebody, it said that, here's what happened, is that Public Works, he's not here right now, it wasn't him, it was Jim before him, put a, how much, you know, how much should your budget be? And so he submitted to the city manager, and the city manager says, there's no way we can afford that. You're going to have to cut your budget. You're going to have to cut out all kinds of projects. And so he cut and cut and cut and cut. So what I'm saying is that the budget was all nonsense because we had all kinds of infrastructure that needed to be worked on. I don't know if you all understand what I'm saying, is that it was all fraud. All of it was fraud. Did you hear what I said? I don't think you all heard what I said. In other words, the budget was just fraud. Was not, there wasn't truth in it at all. It was millions and millions and millions of dollars off on the needs of Public Works. But in order to keep your job, you had to lie. I don't think anybody heard that. Don't think anybody did. Well, it's a big deal. So the thing is, is that if you're going to, if you're going to lie about what our needs are, and then you're going to give people tax breaks saying that they don't need that, we don't need the money, I don't know about this because we're getting all kinds of federal funds. That's the way our country is, our city is surviving the way it is because we get so much federal funding. And guess how much, guess how much per capita we are in the, we are in the, everybody owes $100,000 now, that's what I read, $100,000. Somebody said it's a lot more than that, for every person in the United States. Our federal government is in debt $100,000, $100,000. Essentially, we're bankrupt. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Next up?
I have no other choice.
All right. Member Nelson.
I'm going to move to approve ordinance number 142024, the economic development ad valorem tax rebate referendum. I do have a question beforehand.
Sure.
And this is for, I'm not sure who, but I understand we have standards for what businesses actually qualify, what they have to do to qualify. And I would ask that we consider putting that on the website so that when people can look at it and see, make a decision on whether they want to vote for this kind of referendum.
Sure. And I just wanted to let you know that ballot language is in the statute. We're required to use the ballot language that it comes in the statute. We don't create that ballot language.
So perhaps just having it on the website would be helpful so that people would understand that it's not, a business walks in and we just throw money at them, they have to meet certain requirements.
The criteria is in the code, and that is available online.
Can we put it on the website?
It's, yeah, it's on the MUNI code where we house our ordinances and our land development regulations.
I think she's saying maybe put it somewhere on our website that says like upcoming elections, here, push, like click here to read more about the amendments. So it's more, so you don't have to go dig for it.
A little clarity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think they're.
Second.
Right. Yes.
All right, I have a motion for member Nelson, a second for member Cole. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yeah.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Passed unanimously. We move on to a first reading. City manager.
Item 9B, which is ordinance number 152024, mini warehouses and regional commercial RC zoning. This is the first reading and first public hearing. The second reading and final public hearing is scheduled for the city council meeting on 11 June 2024. The planning and zoning commission recommended denial of this action 6-1. City attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number 152024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances related to mini warehouses in the regional commercial RC zoning district by amending chapter 28 zoning, section 28 214 mini warehouse subsection C standards for permitted uses with limitations, and section 28 315 regional commercial RC, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation into the code, and an effective date.
And Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions that you may have on this first reading. I think you had a change too, didn't you?
There, yeah, there was a change to the ordinance. Just so you, I know this is a first reading, but it's also a public hearing, and there'll be a subsequent public hearing at your next meeting because it's changed in the list of uses, permitted uses in the code. On page 174 of your packet begins the first page of the ordinance. You'll see it's specifically amending section 28 214 of the code, mini warehouses, and you'll see the definition of a mini warehouse there and the zoning districts that it's permitted in. The L means it's a permitted use with certain limitations. The C means it's permitted, but it has to go through a public hearing process. On the next page, on page 175 of your packet, you'll see and strike through and underline the proposed language. This is language that's being proposed by privately initiated, this is not a city staff-initiated ordinance. So you'll see on page 175 of your packet, under the conditions of a mini warehouse in the regional commercial zoning district, there's new language there under C1A, and it states, access to each storage unit shall be from within an enclosed air-conditioned building or from an exterior door internal to the site. That's different from a standard mini warehouse where you have the roll-up garage doors which are open. This is, these are criteria that were in place or put in place in 2015 to allow for an air-conditioned indoor-only mini warehouse-type storage facility in this particular zoning district, this commercial zoning district. On the same page, page 175 of your packet, you'll see in that same section a new subparaphrase E, and it's underlined in red, and it states, the maximum building coverage of 60% is permitted. That was the applicant's initial request at the planning and zoning commission meeting. They suggested a change to that. And so after the planning and zoning commission meeting, we spoke with the applicant, and they are proposing to change that maximum building coverage to 50%. And so you should have received another version of this ordinance with that minor change. On page 176 of your packet, these are the zoning development standards for the RC, the regional commercial zoning district. So again, this change that's being requested is specific to one type of use in one particular zoning district. You'll see the RC zoning district standards have the minimum lot area, the minimum, maximum building coverage, and so on, and setbacks. And further down, you'll see a notation number four, where it talks about building coverage and maximum, the standard building coverage for any use, any development in this zoning district is maxed out at 30%. What the applicant is suggesting is to allow for that to be increased up to 50% specifically for a mini warehouse use. We did provide to you a staff report on page 171 of your packet. I won't read through it all, I'll just summarize. Staff is not in support of the request. There was a, prior to 2015, mini warehouse was always listed as an industrial use in industrial zoning districts. In 2015, a request was to allow, was approached to us, to staff, to see if we can allow a mini warehouse in a community commercial zoning district. We objected to that. The applicant then suggested maybe the regional commercial zoning district. If you recall, several of the zoning districts have a hierarchy of intensity. Regional commercial is very intense, and then you have community commercial, then you have tourist, neighborhood commercial, and open office professional. Same thing with industrial districts, there's some that are more intense, and then they get less intense, depending on the district you're using. So again, prior to 2015, mini warehouse was only allowed in industrial zoning districts. In 2015, an applicant at the time asked for a new ordinance to allow some flexibility. Conditions were put into the code in 2015 to allow for an enclosed air-conditioned mini warehouse only in the regional commercial zoning district. We have one project that was, that actually utilized that, and that is the old Kmart building that's on Cheney Highway. That old building was converted into an enclosed air-conditioned mini warehouse use. The potential property owner, I believe, is actually requesting to see if they could have more flexibility on that particular property, but in order to do that, they want to see if they can change the code, which in effect will affect, will impact all properties that are current, that are also zoned, regional commercial. Staff is not in support of expanding mini warehouse outside of an enclosed building. And now, in other words, what they're suggesting is a standard mini warehouse use in a regional commercial zoning district. We believe generally that that is a creep of industrial uses creeping into commercial areas. The comprehensive plan does talk about where industrial uses are primarily, should be focused. It talks about specific roadways. It does not mention Cheney Highway, although there are a couple of properties that are legacy properties that were there prior to the 1993 citywide rezoning that are M1, and I believe one of them does have a roll-up door type standard mini warehouse use. So our findings are on page 172 of your packet, and our recommendation, staff is concerned with the gradual change of the RC zoning into an industrial district. Concerns center on the use of the RC zoning for industrial uses such as mini warehouses. Warehousing constructed in the traditional layout of individual buildings with separate entrances, garage doors to each unit rather than units being located with a single enclosed air-conditioned building. Issues raised by the request include visual and noise impacts to neighboring residential and commercial uses, resulting in a change to character of the area. Should council wish to consider the proposed change, staff recommends that limitations or conditions be established that will address these issues. We have not proposed any specific limitations, conditions, because our recommendation is not to go forward with this. If you do ask us to do that, we will ask if there are any specific conditions or limitations you believe that would be appropriate. With that, I'll try to answer any questions.
I see no questions.
Let me have a squall.
Okay, member Nelson? Oh, here we go, got a couple.
Okay. You're talking about access to the storage unit shall be from within enclosed air-conditioned building or from an exterior door internal to the site. So that last part, I'm confused.
All right, can you point to me what you're referring to?
This is C, page 175, C1A.
Okay, so the current language says access to each storage unit shall be from within enclosed air-conditioned building, and that's pretty straightforward is what we have. The next part of that sentence is being added here, or from an exterior door internal to the site. I believe the applicant does have a presentation they'd like to show you that has a layout for proposal that illustrates what they're describing here.
Okay. Anybody else? Member Stokel, you good?
Yeah, I was just going to say I did have questions, but Brad did a good presentation that answered my question, so thank you.
Very good. Call the card? Cards?
Yes, sir. Two cards. The first is Tony Shippalo.
Well, yeah, hold on, hold on, hold on. I certainly would, but it is the first reading. And I was actually expecting her to be the first card. And who's your second card?
I'm so sorry, sir. Those, I believe the applicant is here.
I did not intend to present.
Okay.
I can answer questions if you like, but.
Okay. Now we'll call the card. Yes, first reading. See? I knew it.
Tony Shippalo.
Walk fast.
Shippalo, Tropic Street. This is a mini warehouse of the wrong kind in the wrong place. The planning and zoning commission recommended denial 6 to 1 of this application to amend the text of the city's land development regulations. Even staff is concerned. How often does that happen? If I were making the rules and changing the look of the city, I would be careful in approving requests that will allow major or even minor changes to the intent of the land development regulations. Careful reading of the 73 listed regional commercial zoned properties so thoughtfully enclosed by Ms. Frazinka show a majority to be clustered around the two I-95 exits in town and a few scattered at the east end of Highway 50, probably approved by shortsighted staff and councils past. These are mostly shopping centers, parking lots, I read over the whole list, convenience stores, several banks and credit unions, restaurants, a few entertainment venues, and vacant properties. No outside storage. We're looking into the future of our town with the Titusville Tomorrow Project, and one outstanding comment from citizens heard at several meetings, I've attended most of them, we don't need more storage units. The client knows the code for this property. If they insist on open access units, then they should build in an area where code allows that. Change your location, not our zoning code put in place to protect our neighborhoods. Let's don't go wild making all these changes to good plans. Thank you.
Next card?
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, there's a lot I don't know, and I don't know a lot about this project, but I'm putting a neutral comment, neutral in, but I want to comment on, and I can't talk to our city manager, can't talk to our city attorney, but I can talk to you guys, is that what I would like to have on this is that, is that when you, when you do a site plan on it, that you have a survey, a survey that has corners, that actually has corners. Because right now, you can see is what the city can do, is city can have a survey, they know is wrong, it doesn't have the corners there, and yet the city is allowing it to be built on. So what I said before, you've heard before, I called you guys nuts and fruitcakes, and you all know. you're on another planet.
I've heard it before.
Same supplies. You don't need to hear it again, but you did. Thank you. And blame these guys right here. City Attorney, City Manager. Thank you.
Here we go. Next one?
Yes, sir. A card has come in just now from Megan Muscoso.
Oh, Megan. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, Megan Muscoso, Demerit Drive. I just want to say, I think staff did a really good job on this. We had probably about an hour and a half discussion at the P&amp;Z on this item. So I would encourage you, if you have the time before the second hearing, to go back and listen. It might answer a lot of the questions that you have. I think that there are other options besides changing our code. And in your packet, you'll see all of the different developments that this could possibly affect. There's some off of 95, and so just by changing our code, it could, we could possibly have mini warehouses in different locations that we might not want there to be. I think the applicant is aware of this, and I think that there were other options they could use, like a CUP or different variances. So I would say, as you consider this, please go back and watch that meeting, and I think you'll get a lot of your questions answered. Thank you.
Very good input. Thank you. And there's the last card?
Yes, sir.
All right. City Manager.
Onto ordinances, first readings. This is ordinance number 162024, Golden Knights Boulevard. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval 5-2 on this. City Attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 162024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending Chapter 28 zoning, Article 6 zoning district standards. Of the Code of Ordinances to require additional setback and buffer requirements for properties owned industrial M2 abutting Golden Knights Boulevard by amending Sections 28, 318 industrial M2, 30, 332 required landscape yards, and 30, 339 visual buffer and screening requirements, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and incorporation into the code and effective date.
Staff? We did make a change to this ordinance. The advertisement you see on page, or the title of the ordinance, page 187 of your packet, it was advertised to specifically regulate or the buffers that are, that would be developed inside the M2, which is the heavy industrial zoning district. There was a version that was brought before P&amp;Z that appeared to be a little more flexible than what was the title, so we had brought this back to be more specific just to that zoning district. Each time this, this ordinance has been amended or changed, we've also run it by the Airport Authority, and they didn't have any objections to this current version that you have before you now. The change specifically. If you look on page 191 of your packet, there's a new paragraph H. This is under landscape buffers, and this is states, Golden Knights Boulevard, it should state M2 zoning district. That's the new version.
What, what am I looking at here? F, E, which one is?
I'm sorry. So in your packet, and you can compare it with the handouts you may have on... It's page 191 of your packet, excuse me.
You want to go to H? H?
Paragraph H. It's a new paragraph.
Got it.
And you'll see, yeah, I'm sorry. The new language, it starts out with industrial M2. And the reason this is, is because all of the properties that are along Golden Knights Boulevard are zoned M2. I believe there's only one other piece of property that is unincorporated that comes in that would most likely be M2 as well. So the Airport Authority didn't have any concerns with this. This was also a version that was initially shown to P&amp;Z previously, and this was how it was advertised. So we believe that based on discussion that P&amp;Z had, and how this ordinance was advertised, the handout version that you have, not the one that's inside the packet, is the correct version. With that, I'll try to answer any questions you have. This is a first reading, and I believe this, this one did not require a public hearing at the first reading.
Okay. Thank you. Next change is, Member Stokoe.
Yep. Just to clarify, so I think there, originally there was some confusion over if this would be applicable to industrial and commercial as well, and I think you just explaining that did a good job of cleaning it up, that this will be for industrial M2. And now, there would not be a need to change the verbiage or do another ordinance. And so I think you clarified it, and I was wondering how this was going to happen, and you did a good job. Thank you.
I think the word there, "very good," is cleaned up. It's very neat. Very understandable. Nice. Counsel, anything else? Call the card?
Yes, sir. One card, Stan Johnston.
Okay. We're talking about 10 now, 10A?
We're talking about 10A.
All right, 10A. Okay, I want you to focus your attention on two people in this room, and that's right.
You're gonna talk about 10A here?
That's what I'm talking about, 10A. Would you listen to this? This has to do with 10A and these two guys right here.
Don't raise your voice. You sit down.
No, look here. Okay. I want to talk about 10A.
Stop raising your voice. You sit down.
Are you gonna, say I can't, I can't talk about 10A?
I'll say whatever I need to say.
Okay.
You may continue.
All right. 10A. 10A reads as follows. It says, "Visual buffer and screening requirements."
There you go.
Now, I want you to know what's happening with this, this, this kind of issue. It has to do with these two guys right here, that exactly, actually happened, and it has to do with the DRC. Do you know what the DRC is? Do you know what the DRC is? Well, it's Development Review Committee. It bypasses a whole bunch of stuff, like, that would have gone to other places, like, like to council or BA and A, and so forth. So what they did is they shortchanged it, these two guys, and they allowed it. And I've sent them numerous emails about this, and they, they're screwing people. It's not truthful what, what they're doing. It's what they did is, is, is they went ahead and they, they, they approved, the city approved, first of all, they approved an eight-foot-wide driveway on Mockingbird Lane to replace that 20-foot access, eight foot. Then they changed it to a 10-foot wide, then they changed it to a 12-foot. Three different approvals. So what I'm doing is, I've contacted this guy right here, Mr. Tolson. I said, "Mr. Tolson, you know what they've done on this site plan, and what the DRC has done, and what your city attorney and what your, what your city manager have done?" Is they have, they have messed up everybody. They violated Florida Statute 704, they violated common law, they violated survey laws, and they, they, they're still filing, and they're filing the technical manual of the city of Titusville, by their approval. So here's what Mr. Tolson told me to do. He said, "I can't, he can't do anything about it until they build it and approve it. And then I can go ahead and go to Glenn Tolson and complain about it." That is dirty, rotten, crooked group, group that's done by your city manager and your city attorney, and I'm fed up with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards? All right. Next, the city manager.
Onto ordinance number 10B, which is ordinance number 172024, the Landscape Technical Manual. City Attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number 172024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending the Landscaping Technical Manual to update the approved Trees and Shrubs List, specifically amending Section 5 landscaping, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation into the code, and an effective date.
On March 13th, 2024, the TEC approved the Revised Landscape Technical Manual. The Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing and provide recommendations at their June 5th, 2024 meeting. Brad's here to describe the Landscape Technical Manual.
Counsel, any questions? I'm pleased with this, especially if the TEC is approving, means we have cleaned some things up. All right. Call the card?
Yes, sir. There are five cards. The first is Kay Saint Ange.
Hello, Kay Saint Ange, Maryland Avenue. I realize this is the first reading of the ordinance amending the tech manual, list of recommended plans for landscapers, but want to seize the opportunity to provide a little input. A lot of work has been put into this revised list, both by P&amp;Z and TEC, and by Kim Gibbs of the Native Plant Society. This list is a huge improvement over the existing list, which according to my calculations has only 30% native plants. The list before you tonight has 73% bivard native or regional native plants. Let me clarify for you these terms. Bivard native plants grow naturally in Bivard County without being planted or tended by man. Regional native plants grow naturally in another area of Florida, but will grow here if planted. Both types of native plants are far better to plant than non-native or even Florida-friendly plants. Florida-friendly plants are often from other countries, but will grow here if planted. We need landscapers to plant native plants, regional native or bivard native plants, as so many native plants are being removed by developers. Native plants grow here without additional water once established and need no fertilizers. Thus, approving this amended list for the tech manual could be a big benefit for the lagoon. Butterflies and pollinators depend upon native plants. Without pollinators, production of fruits and vegetables is jeopardized. Native plants attract birds and the caterpillars and bugs that they feed on. Newborn birds are fed exclusively on caterpillars and bugs. Nearly 30% of the birds have vanished in the U.S. since 1970 due to habitat destruction. By adopting this ordinance, you will be reducing the rate by which birds are declining. Let me also make a suggestion to you. When the city plants or hires landscapers to plant, please consider planting native trees and plants as much as possible, particularly along the lagoon. The Bivard Zoo recently planted native plants along the seawall in Sandpoint Park to serve as a model. These native plants are an alternative to planting sod right up to the lagoon, which requires fertilizers and spread grass clippings into the lagoon. If the city were to plant native sable palms along the lagoon with native plants underneath, this would help reduce erosion along the lagoon shoreline, provide habitat, reduce fertilizer use, reduce grass clippings, which add nitrogen to the lagoon, and serve as an example to other landscapers and residents. One more second, please. At the second reading, please approve this amended list of recommended plants in the tech manual for the birds, bees, butterflies in the lagoon, and let's set an example. Let's go native.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
I told you I was pleased. Next up?
Kimberly Gibbs.
Kind of a new one. I don't know this one. We don't, we don't have many new people step up.
Good evening, Mayor, and members. My name's Kim Gibbs. I live on Merritt Island, and I'm a member of the Florida Native Plant Society here in Titusville. Wow. Well, I just agree with everything Kay just said. I've been aware of this issue, that you've been reviewing the tech manual for several months now, or that it's been on the agenda. So I want to commend you for taking up this issue and for spending your time and effort and staff resources on this. I've attended some of the TEC meetings, and I've just been so impressed with their deliberations, their discussion on this issue. So I invite you to just take a moment and to think about plants for a moment. Think about the plants that are in your yard, and think about the impact of updating this, this list. So my understanding is that it would be used for, for example, developments. So you would be requiring some certain amount of the plants to be from this list. And the list has been comprised from, it's kind of a mashup of multiple lists. You had the original, then you have the Chimley-Horn list that was used, and then I created a separate list that was just bivard native plants. So through that process, the TEC and your, your staff created this now updated list that will be used. It includes natives and non-natives, and so I just want to emphasize the difference between our native and non-native plants, but Kay did a great job of explaining that. I want to emphasize that they're not the same. They don't provide the same amount of value or environmental value. And I'm gonna pick on you there, Member Robinson. Yes, all plants are contributing something, but our non-native plants didn't evolve. They didn't evolve with the native plant community. They're not providing the same benefits. So in the best case, they're really close to a very sterile type of a plant material. You've got your astroturf, that's plastic. The non-native plants, many of them are just one step away. You know, that's your arboricola, your podocarpus, your crotons, really not providing any value to any environmental value. And then in the worst possible case, they can become extremely invasive. You've heard of the Brazilian pepper. We've all seen that, and the terrible environmental damage that they, that they have caused. The Australian pine, the melaleuca, and the list goes on and on. Those plants didn't start off being invasive. They were brought here by the plant nursery or the plant industry, and they became invasive over time. So really, the best way to go is to encourage and urge and require planting more native plants. Thank you so much for your good work.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next up?
Michael Mijak.
Go native. Yes.
Go native.
What they said. Okay. I have one minor nit to pick on this. We, we worked really hard to get a native and bivard county list of plants, and staff and the consultant wanted to use the old list that we had that were really not beneficial to our environment. And so we ended up with, was merging them together, so that we would have our bivard natives, as well as our Florida natives that are not regional to here, and then the non-natives are exotics. And we actually voted to call them exotics, so that we understood that there was a difference in that plant from a native plant and its value to our environment. But the nit that I have to pick is that there's 14 plants that were on that 300-and-some-odd list that didn't get merged in, that were part of our vote on the TEC, that these are supposed to be in there, and they're not. And just to give you a cue, I don't know, but I've heard of a laurel oak. Why was the laurel oak removed from the list? I don't know, but it's not there. Sweet acacia, dwarf flyvoke, blue stem grasses are off the list. And if you've ever seen them, they're actually quite gorgeous. Gopher tortoises love them. Gopher apple, that was one I learned about in the enchanted forest. It's a little low ground cover, but the little apples it produces, a gopher tortoise loves. Why is that not on the list? Why are these 14 things that were on Kim's list, that we voted on, would be merged and are missing? So that's my nit. The rest of it, I think, is great, and I hope we get it to go. And Brad, I'm gonna give you this, 'cause you need to put these back. They were accidentally left off.
Thank you, Mike. Next up?
Laura Lee Thompson.
Laura Lee, what do you know about this stuff?
Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, Mims. So I wasn't aware of the 14 nitpicking plants that were left off, 'cause I was so happy with what I saw. And, I mean, this, this has been a long, long process. And the poor consultant, Shima, had, I mean, she's been so patient and so good working with us, and Kimberly, your input, incredible. I don't know of any other community that has such an extensive landscape list of native plants. I mean, we, we should be so proud of this. You should be proud of this, because we're setting the bar for other communities. We set the bar with our tree canopy ordinance. We're gonna set the bar with this. Other communities are gonna be so envious of what we have here. So regardless of whether the 14 plants that accidentally got left off get added back into it or not, I, I know this is a first reading. I'm not gonna be here... talk about this again, because I would support both of those motions also, in addition to the motion to approve this tree list and landscape list for the technical manual. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up.
Our last card, Stan Johnston.
Stan, you haven't passed all night.
Stan Johnston, I'm neutral on this. I really appreciate what the T E C has been doing on that, on this particular issue. My concern is that what I've just showed you said before on the last issue is that when you have a technical manual, how in the world can the city manager and the city attorney just violate it? Just say, hey, violate. And that's what's going on. I just don't appreciate what's going on. It's not truthful. It's not justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right. City Manager.
Onto ordinance number eighteen, twenty twenty-four, which is item ten C. This is the Florida Live Local Act ordinance, first reading, and the Planning and Zoning Commission will consider this ordinance at their hearing on June fifth, twenty twenty-four. City Attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number eighteen, twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the standards and procedures for development of affordable housing projects in commercial, industrial, and mixed-use districts and implementing amendments to section one sixty-six point zero four, one five one, subsection seven, Florida statutes of the Live Local Act. By amending and clarifying chapter twenty-nine, special districts and overlays, article eight, special land use standards, division four, affordable housing, sections twenty-nine, one forty-four, purpose, twenty-nine, one forty-five, definitions, twenty-nine, one forty-six, development standards, and twenty-nine, one forty-seven, expedited review process, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, sunset provisions, and incorporation into the code.
Brad, you got anything?
It's the first reading, so if you have any questions.
Counsel? Card?
Excuse me, sir. Yes, just a few cards. The first is Stu Buchanan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Stuart Buchanan. I'm a resident of the City of Titusville. My working address, mailing address is P O Box fifteen forty-five, Titusville, Florida, three-two-seven-eight-one. Normally, I would not get up at a first reading of an ordinance. There is some information that I wanted to relay to Mayor and City Council, specifically in this ordinance, should you be contacted or receive input between first and second reading, so you would be forewarned and forearmed. I support this ordinance exactly how it's written. I would recommend that you follow staff's recommendation and the way staff has written this. I'm going to give you an example here in Brevard County, where the first city that adopted this, the City of Melbourne, had a project that fell under this. I can only tell you this now because the project's all done. It's one of my projects. It was one of my developers. I appeared, what they did, which you all may be asked to do between now and second reading, is to include impact fee waivers for the affordable housing portion. This has been done by several cities. In other words, for the units that are considered affordable housing, do impact fee waivers. I appeared at the Planning and Zoning Board for the City of Melbourne, and I said, when you do a multifamily project and you're creating a community, you want a cross-section of that community. If you, and I told, explained to the P and Z, by only incentivizing the, you've got twenty, thirty, forty percent threshold, I think they only did one threshold here, Melbourne did three, I said, there are some developers who will do a hundred percent affordable housing just because of the value of the impact fee waivers. P and Z actually changed their recommendation to the City Council. They included that. They recommended it as presented and said, but wait, take a look at this. And so what I said was either incentivize it as a project or don't incentivize it at all, because you need a cross-section of the community. You want low-income, what we call workforce housing, middle-class, cross-section of the community. Went to the City Council. City Council went ahead and did it as presented. In other words, they didn't do, they didn't include the recommendation from P and Z. Within forty-eight hours, our project went from twenty percent affordable housing to eighty percent affordable housing because it saved over five million dollars to the bottom line. Within forty-eight hours, myself, the real estate attorney involved reviewed it, contacted staff, said, make sure you wrote this the way we think you did, and it completely changed the tone of the project. So what I'm saying is, I support this ordinance. Please adopt it the way staff has presented it to you. If you are approached about including impact fee waivers, I would be very, very cautious. It can change the tone of the entire project. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Hearing that from you, it's nice to hear. Important. Next up.
Tony Shifalo.
Tony Shifalo, the historic Norwood House. As the resident owner of a historic structure, there are several areas in this ordinance that bother me, and I would hope you've noticed these and will act upon them before this becomes our local law. As you remember, staff urged you to hurriedly push through a local live, a local live local ordinance, portions of which I objected strenuously to, but I was advised by staff that the state law preempts our objections to height, setback, density issues, but the city could modify the effects. Well, here we are again with the state's modified version, and our local proposed ordinance still doesn't push back to the limits the state allows, thus deferring to the developers in the name of affordable housing, instead of helping home-owning citizens maintain their neighborhood's integrity due to setback, height, and density, not being able to be controlled. So I've arranged to have a meeting with staff for them to clarify the interpretations of the state statutes, and I plan to attend the planning and zoning meeting concerning this issue. And I intend to educate and organize my neighbors so that we can be effective in shaping this ordinance. As the rogue citizen who may maybe be bringing the flooding to Riverside Drive, I also am an informed citizen trying to prevent the tsunami of gentrification heading toward West Titusville and my home in Canaveral Heights. So I'm setting up a meeting with your staff before this comes again, and I want us all to be very familiar with it and help the citizens, not the developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Tony, and you might not have it right now. I would, if you have anything that you've already noticed that you have questions on or that you're going to take a pause on, I would like to know that.
Yes, ma'am.
And then as you find out things, if you could email, I don't know, I would like to see your emails prior to the next meeting.
Okay. I'll send them to you. Thank you. You requested that months before.
Yes, thank you.
Followed through, and I have it here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next card.
Kay St. Ange.
Kay St. Ange, Maryland Avenue. As per Vice Mayor Robinson, density is a problem. That is one of my main concerns. I realize this is a state law, and you have very limited ability to affect all this, but I do have, I understand that there has to be a commercial component for these developments under Live Local Act. And I also understand, if I'm right, that as many as forty units per acre can be built. So my, what I don't understand is, do you subtract the acreage of the commercial development before you apply the forty units per acre? Or?
Brad, can you say?
Do you understand?
I understand the question. So the whole thing, a mixed-use component of the Live Local qualifying project is part of the general site plan. So as density is concerned, we're going to look at the entire site plan as far as that calculation.
So you will be looking at the commercial component while you're considering the forty units per acre?
The entire site, because the mixed-use component is supposed to be the number, the ratio of square feet of the buildings. So there's nothing in our code right now that talks about squaring off a piece of land, and that can't be counted towards that calculation. That's not addressed. So density is based on the project boundaries.
Well, thank you very much for that clarity.
Thank you. Next card.
Stan Johnston.
I have a question also. Is eleven A, is that the one that's been canceled? Eleven A?
Eleven, no, you're talking about ten D.
I'm, okay, I'm saying, but it's eleven A, is that the one that was canceled?
No.
No.
What is the one that's canceled?
Ten D.
Ten D, okay. All right, good. So what I have on that, I'm neutral on that. I don't know a whole lot about it, and I'll just pass, okay?
Thanks, Dan.
You're welcome.
Next card.
That's it.
All right, first reading, no action. City Manager.
Once again, we have tabled S S A three dash twenty twenty-two, which is the Bristol Project, Agenda Item nine D. So off to Old Business, which is item eleven A, which is the City of Titusville's fiscal year twenty twenty-five strategic plan. Staff recommends that you affirm the twenty twenty-five strategic goals and objectives as revised on the thirty April twenty twenty-four meeting.
And Counsel, anything? I had seen no staff to talk to. So call cards?
Yes, sir. Three cards. The first is Tony Shifalo.
I had her picked. Oh, okay. Yeah, three in the corner. The...
Tony Shifalo, Tropic Street. I'm speaking only because I've been so vocal about this all along, about this process for years now. I've been coming to the meetings and taking the surveys, and I still was not happy with the process at the April thirtieth special meeting. However, I am okay about the written report presented to Counsel this evening. Goes into much more depth and detail and talks about the negative things that we didn't hear at the other meeting. The written report goes a bit more in-depth on the issues where the scores are low because the citizens, you know, said they felt invisible. The special meeting report was awkwardly superficial and suggested unnecessary work in areas that citizens rated higher. So it's diverting attention from the real problems where the scores were really low. And those real problems are much more difficult to solve than just saying, you know, I think she spoke about crime was one of the things that needed to be looked at, and yet, when you look at the stats, the crime, people were pretty pleased with our service.
Agreed.
Here. And so to say that we got to look at crime is kind of a, what do they call it, dog whistle or something, you know, over the air, because the issues that people were unhappy about, you know, you're not going to have time to look at. So the agenda says Counsel made several minor changes and additions, and staff returned with an improved fiscal year twenty-five strategic plan. You know that chart, which reflects real action and concern for citizen input, which is part of the process before that I found was inoperable, you know, that I didn't feel like we really, we came to the meetings, we did the things, and nothing changed. The paper they gave us at the beginning with the chart with the, you know, the goals and the objectives was the very same one that they brought to you later. And I thought, well, that's not really exactly what happened when we sat in those workshops. So I find the new goals and objectives a valid effort to improve our city, especially with the new emphasis on Communities Design Number Six. That was a really good stroke on yours' part. I was really happy about that. And I suggest that perhaps in the future, we go forward, we have the workshops and we have the surveys, so that everybody feels like they were being seen and heard. Thank you.
Well done. Next up.
Kristin Lordy.
Kristin Lordy, Cocoa Resident. So this is one of the topics that I'm very passionate about is our strategic planning. So I would like to say that I oppose the acceptance of the current report, and I'd like to tell you why. The reasons why are because I believe there was an inadequate use of citizen input. The survey results, I felt, were bastardized and trivialized, and that the benchmarks were not analyzed. So there's very interesting benchmarks that are in the hundred-and-five-page report. They were not analyzed. The key findings were skimmed in the surface in order to put into the boxes and insert into the boxes, but I pulled out one example of a benchmark for everyone to consider. This one is generally acting in the best interest of the community. Titusville rated as three hundred and twenty ranking of three hundred and twenty-six communities that were surveyed on that particular benchmark, bottom two percent. And I think it's too easy to discredit this survey because it has a high level, ninety-five percent confidence interval based on the number of citizens that responded. So it was a survey that was sent, a random survey, sent out. So anyway, I think it should be further studied. I feel that there was inadequate use of live citizen input, both from the four-twenty-three meeting where we came in advance and gave you our input, and then at the four-thirty meeting where we couldn't speak until the end of the workshop. And our input was even trivialized in the meeting minutes, in my opinion, from a review of those. The consultant discussion was awkward and manipulated, and it seemed to be, to simply be an updating of the box exercise, the boxes. And yet, where do the boxes go? So I continue to ask this question because there is no accountability for what happens next with your goals and objectives. Should we love your goals and objectives? There's no accountability to your actual performance measures. The, now, sixty-eight performance measures that we have on your F Y twenty-four performance measures. So until there is actual accountability and visibility into the city manager's performance measures for the city, what is the purpose? There's currently no requirement for any measures to be added for there to be any visibility. Oh, but you do get this. You get a quarterly report, which is the latest thing the city manager has added, a quarterly report of the city manager's accomplishments that the public can't even speak to because it's not a voted-on item. This is inadequate. What you need, or at least what you used to do, which is you'd have at least these performance measures, and you'd get something quarterly that talks about it. And maybe the city manager still does this, but he doesn't send it out to you. It's not part of what is in this quarterly accomplishments list, which can be easily disputed. So until this process is brought together and is no longer hollow and anemic and actually utilizes all of the information, I oppose it. So I suggest that you do not accept it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card.
Stan Johnston.
Boy, that was horrible what she said. Oh, golly. That wasn't very nice at all. Goodness. I don't know, maybe she shouldn't be allowed to speak here. That was terrible what she reported.
Everybody's allowed to speak.
But what was maybe even worse was the article that I read about the survey. I don't know if y'all said that. I can send it to you. But there's an article that somebody wrote, I don't want to put the person's name on it, but said that the survey says that the City of Titusville stinks. It really does. I think some of y'all read that article. It's horrible. City Titusville stinks. So this is what this Kristin was talking about.
But Stan, you know that's a lie.
Well, the things that, there's, excuse me, I should say this, on certain issues, on certain issues.
Yeah, but you didn't want to say that, did you?
So I should be clarified, because, for example, solid waste is fantastic. We got a good police department, okay? So, but on some areas, it says, like she mentioned about misrepresentation, I'm saying like three hundred and twenty out of three hundred and twenty-six right near the bottom. And there's a bunch of, our ratings were about one percent on the bottom, right there on the bottom. And that has to do with, and see, it's kind of a, see, contradictory, because how can our Counsel vote our city manager as, you know, from all these, averaging all these things up, he's got a perfect, exceeds expectations on everything. And he's, my understanding is he's making like two hundred and twenty thousand... And there's a bunch of, our, our ratings were about one percent on the bottom, right there on the bottom. And that has to do with, and, and see, it's, it's kind of a, see, contradictory, because how can our council vote our city manager as, you know, from all these, averaging all these things up, is he's got a perfect, exceeds expectations on everything? And he's, my understanding is he's making like two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and, and I was told, somebody told me the mayor of Orlando is making only about a hundred and ten, twice as much as Orlando mayor. So anyhow, I can send that article to you, if you like, because it's, it's just, I, I couldn't believe it. And I said, I didn't realize this, that the survey was, was just horrific. So I, I suggest that you, you take a look at that, because I know that, that you, you guys have, you know, there's a, there's a lot of good about our city. This is my hometown. I don't want it going to pieces, and that's one of the reasons I'm here, because I don't want it going to pieces. Thank you for helping. Thank, thank you for trying. But let's be truthful about what's happening with our city manager, what he's doing. Thank you.
Next. Okay, remember Nelson?
Move to affirm the City of Titusville Fiscal Year twenty twenty-five Strategic Plan.
Second.
Got the motion, remember Nelson, second member Cole, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Senate Manager.
Onto item twelve A, which is under new business. This is the code enforcement lien reduction request for the property located at twenty-three-hundred Columbia Boulevard. The special magistrate's recommendation for code enforcement lien reduction of daily fines from the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred dollars to fifteen thousand and payable to the City of Titusville within ninety days. This property is located at twenty-three-hundred Columbia Boulevard. Staff recommends that you approve the special magistrate's recommendations.
Vice Mayor?
I've looked at that, but I would like to hear from.
Like to hear, that's right. I'm about to say, I think she's here. Is there a card over there? Ms. Geller?
Yes, sir. There are two cards.
I'd just like to hear from her.
Yeah.
I believe the first card is, represents the property.
We'd like to hear that, please.
Carla Nettles.
I knew it.
My name is Carla Nettles, and I live in Cocoa. And I'm representing the property.
Okay. What's, are you, are the peeler, or are you, what are you looking to do? Are you looking to?
We applied for the lien reduction. The tenant that was in there was representing us at the hearings, and so along the process, he was telling us that he was gonna rectify the situation, and we didn't need to be involved, and he never did. And so he kept, he would give us, he would say that he was meeting the deadlines, and he was doing what you guys wanted him to do, but he wasn't, which.
Which is what?
We, we weren't. I've definitely learned lots of lessons in this whole situation and how this went, and it won't happen again. I also didn't know that he represented himself here and basically told you guys that he wasn't gonna do anything about it. I, and I had no idea that was happening.
Uh. Member Stokel?
Yep. So just to clarify, you're here to speak in support of wanting counsel to reduce the lien amount from the twenty-two nine to the fifteen thousand?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor? No? Remember Nelson?
Carla, what is your relationship to the property? How are you involved?
I manage the property.
Okay.
So I work for the owner of the property.
Okay, he owns other properties in town?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And has for a number of years?
Yes.
Okay.
And we've never had an issue, and that was the thing, too, that this has been a learning experience, because we haven't ever had to deal with this before. And so I've been taking care of this for almost twelve years, and we've never, this has never come up. So when I came for the magistrate, the hearing, that one, I, when she asked me, what was I gonna do if this happened again, and I was like, this is not gonna happen again. It'll come first notice, and it'll get rectified or it'll.
When did you actually realize that there was an issue there?
I, I got the notice from the beginning.
Okay.
But I just took his word that he was, because I didn't realize to the extent that he, he had the issue, and that also to the extent that he wasn't doing anything about it, and was telling me that he had taken care of it, and it was resolved. But I didn't. I, it's.
As property manager, do you go around and check the properties?
We do, some, like, if, yes.
I mean, I think most property owners go and check on their property on a fairly regular basis.
Probably not fairly regularly, but.
Maybe once a month.
But you, but, I mean, and it's somewhere that I had driven past, but I didn't. I wasn't aware of what he couldn't have there.
Okay.
Like the storage being the issue that it was. I didn't, like, the stor, like, not being able to have the products that he had there.
Okay.
And to the excess that he had there. I didn't know, in my mind's eye, I was just thinking, it was his, the business, it ran with the, with the items that he had, and he, I just, I didn't realize that he, it was to the extent that it was.
Okay. Mr. Thompson?
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell us how we got to this point? And I apologize, I think I'm going back to prosecute, but.
No, no.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
No, it eventually, the case actually started over the open storage of building materials. We responded back, and the site did not have an open storage by zoning. And so we issued the notice of violation, went to Ms. Nettles as well as the property owner, and the tenant came to the meeting. And the original hearing, the special magistrate said, you need to reduce your inventory of the open storage by fifty percent by April.
Okay.
April came around, and it actually had more material than less material. So she issued the, the daily fine at that point. And then it, we kept trying to work with them. I actually never spoke with Ms. Nettles until the last hearing.
What about Mr. Rhodes?
I've never spoke to Mr. Rhodes.
Okay. So what kind of representations was the tenant making to you?
Well, he kept promising a, a lot of things, and we kept doing daily inspections. Where are we going? We're not moving, we're adding, we need to move. And there was talk of another place in some other part of the state, he was moving. He never came into compliance until November. Then he finally came into compliance. And then, at that point, we put the property in compliance. Ms. Nettles applied, well, actually, the tenant applied first, and he did not meet the criteria. And then therefore, they provided that information to them and to Ms. Nettles, with which she, then she came in, paid the hard cost to the city, and then applied at the last hearing and the special magistrate based on her testimony reduced it from the twenty-two thousand nine to fifteen thousand.
Okay. Did you ever, did Ms. Nettles ever reach out to you?
No, ma'am, not until the, the last hearing.
Okay.
So how quickly did the owner or the property manager become aware of the situation?
They were notified, certified mail on every step of the way.
It's always nice to be able to reduce a fine or something like that, and we've done that. And in this case, I'm still trying to figure out how we got where we are and why this wasn't taken care of at some point. And, you know, it was cut in half, I'm, I'd still like to hear, like, in the past, where you said, well, this is, wasn't their fault, or whatever, whatever, but it seems like we had a lot of people knowing it, or not a lot, but we had the proper people knowing about it, and we weren't getting it remedied. Does that sound right?
Yes, sir. That, that's correct.
Remember Stokel?
Yeah, I think my assumption is that a lot of lessons were learned in this situation. I would venture to say there was a lot of trust that was given, and it sounds like, especially if the tenant came instead of the property manager and the owner, that probably wasn't ideal. You know, this probably would've been all fine had the tenant come and said the truth, and everything would've been fine, but that didn't happen. So again, I go back to, I think our, our goal here is to not collect funds, but to get people in compliance. And so I wish there was a little bit more due diligence that happened, but I'm inclined to agree with the magistrate and what they went through with that process, and I'm okay with lowering it to the fifteen K. And I think lesson learned, you know, moving forward.
Yeah, and, and I would always like to, you know, say lessons learned, and, and let's reduce that even more, but I'm, I'm trying to find a reason to do that. Remember Nelson?
Well, I sort of figure there's two reasons to find somebody, one, to get you in compliance, two, to make sure that in the future, you pay attention to what's going on. Because if you had shown up that first hearing, you would've known, you would've known Mr. Thompson, you would've called him, you would've said, hey, what's going on? So my thought is reduce it to seventy-five hundred.
I, I, I like that as well. That's still significant, so it's not like it would go unnoticed by any means. I, again, I wish there was more that we could hear over here that, I remember, we had two previous where you were able to say, well, like, the roof was put on, they didn't know it, and all that kind of thing. Oh, no, matter of fact, it was a fake roof company or something, that's what happened.
Yes, yes, in that particular matter.
And we, we took care of that one pretty good. I tend to lean that way as well, and, and even that's significant and noteworthy, but it's certainly not twenty-two thousand nine hundred, and it's not fifteen thousand. So I don't get to make any motions or that sort of thing. We, so we gotta take cards, too, right? We need to work on that. This is one area where I'd like to ordinance the cards away, I think, because it's so different. Call the card?
Yes, sir. Stan Johnston.
I'll pass.
Thank you. Don't leave. All right, so now we can make that motion. Remember Nelson?
So I would move to reduce the code enforcement lien for the property at twenty-three-hundred Columbia Boulevard to seventy-five hundred.
I have a motion. Do I get a second?
Second.
I have a second from member Cole. Let's roll call vote this one.
Reduce it to seven?
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred?
That's down from twenty-two nine. And then, go ahead.
No, I, I'm, I guess I'm okay. I feel like the request, though, was just the fifteen thousand, so I don't know where we got seventy-five hundred from.
We are, just like we did last time, they could, we are.
But I feel like the request last time was, they were asking for, like, the twenty-two hundred or whatever we did. This one is asking for fifteen thousand, so I'm just not sure where the seventy-five hundred.
Well, actually, last time, if I'm not mistaken, we wiped out the entire thing because of.
Yes, that's correct.
Because the roof company was bogus.
But that was the request of the person that came forward.
Right, right.
But she's requested.
That wasn't from the magistrate, that was from the person who was here.
I requested less, but that was the magistrate's, magistrate's suggestion.
Okay, that's where I guess I'm confused, because that's what I originally asked, if, are you here to, in support of us lowering it to the fifteen thousand? You said yes, so that's where I was like, wait, where did the seventy-five hundred come from? Okay.
I could tell in her face, she was looking.
Yeah, okay.
So, whether that's the case or not, I think that that's.
Okay.
We're still kind of rookies at this. So I haven't really done a lot of this finding thing, but I think seventy-five hundred, it gives somebody a wake-up call and says, we gotta start checking.
Okay, that's fine.
So I have a motion and a second, roll call vote. Any favor?
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
So that would be reduced to seventy-five hundred from fifteen K, and from that before was, whatever that is, can't read it, twenty-two nine.
And yes, lesson learned.
So, but in my household, that's still significant, so.
It was, yeah.
So the point I'm making is, it's, it's noteworthy, but it's not fifteen.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Senate Manager.
You are to petitions and requests.
I think there'll be talked, I don't think there's anybody left. All right, there's no petitions and requests at this time.
Onto the mayor and council reports.
I'll go with member Stokel, work our way this way.
Yep, I think I only have one thing to share, is the police memorial service that some of us attended. Yeah, I, I, that is probably the heaviest event that I attend as a council member. Just, it's like, you're like, oh, yeah, you're gonna go and honor, and then when you start hearing them reading the names of how many fallen officers in the.
Families stood up in front of us.
And the families, yeah, it just really hits you to see, and then seeing, you know, families with, that are missing, a brother, a son, a spouse. They, they did a really good job with that event, so I would just encourage anyone that has not gone to it to go. And that's all I have.
Vice Mayor?
Only then, Memorial Day in same lines as everything else out at Veterans Park, and I wanted to share with everyone that the city manager took advantage of the shortcut coming from a.
He, he's like that.
And I wanted to share as well, I have to be equally impartial on this, that member Nelson, she went the long way. And the mayor was refreshed and comfortable when he got there, and the member Nelson was sweaty and tired when she got there.
It's hot.
And that's what I did. I went to both the Memorial Day ceremonies over at the gravy site, and well as the one at Veterans Park. Both were very nice.
Member Cole?
Well, I had a very busy Memorial Day morning. I was a guest speaker at two.
Right.
Different occasions, one at eight o'clock and one at ten o'clock at the, at the Barbados Veterans Memorial, which was absolutely gorgeous. They had about five hundred people there. And my presentation was on Memorial Day and, and how many people we have lost in various wars. And as a Vietnam veteran, I spoke to Vietnam, as Vietnam veterans, and one, the number I had was that Vietnam war lasted eleven years. There was one guy in the audience that said, well, I was in Vietnam in nineteen sixty-one, like, sixty-one. It did, and very few people know about that, because I talked to some people that were in Laos in fifty-eight and fifty-nine, and Vietnam in fifty-nine and sixty, but nobody here in the United States knew that these guys were there, and we had lives lost. We were supposed to be in advisory capacity, but we really weren't. But it was a, it was a, a really nice event. It was hot, and I know you guys were hot up here, because we were hot on Merritt Island, so, but it was enjoyable, and it was, it was fantastic for me, being a, a twenty-six-year veteran and Vietnam veteran, and going to the best service in the world, the United States Air Force, rather than the Army and the Coast Guard. But other than that, sorry about that, guys. Thank you.
Remember Nelson?
I did not walk the bridge on the way back after this, after the service. It was way too hot. I walked along Indian River Avenue where there were trees and shade, so, but it was a great service. I'm sad I missed the police memorial service, but renovations took priority. I will say that Saturday morning, the mayor. I will say that Saturday morning, the mayor needs to be at the Methodist Church at 7:00 in the morning to feed the homeless.
Okay, I, okay, I think I'm double booked.
Saturday.
Okay.
And at 10:00, Miss St. Ange is going to plant another 24, 26 trees, one of the two. The Titusville Sunrise Rotary donated to the cause, so we bought some trees. And I don't know where she scared up the rest of them, but she did it. So if the vice mayor or the mayor want to plant a tree, they need to be on time.
That's right. They'll have them planted before you get there.
And don't forget the code enforcement picnic at 11:00 on Saturday.
Oh, yeah. Where is that? Where is that?
At Harry T. Moore on De Leon. All right, just to finalize all that, I actually am at St. Andrews Men's Breakfast at 7:30, so we'll see how that works out. Tree planting at 10:00, code enforcement at 11:00. So we're very, very busy on that day. That's a wonderful day. Brevard, I don't know if anybody else is going. I think, I bet you are, but Brevard County Affordable Housing Summit?
Oh, yeah, Friday.
That's Friday all day. Yeah, so that's a big deal. I've not been to one of those, Space Coast Convention Center in Cocoa. I look forward to that. I went to four graduations. I went to the Kids Place Kindergarten graduation from IRC. That was probably the best. And then I went to Astronaut High Schools, and then I went to Titusville High Schools. And then I kind of unexpectedly got invited and went to the Space Coast High School graduation. And when I walk in, you know how you walk in early, they give you a cookie or whatever. And all of a sudden, the principal looks at me and says, would you like to speak? I'm like, what? What? So I, you know, I went through my head. So I gave a little, I gave a little coach's speech. I actually, I actually did talk about, basically what it was about is, you know, be yourself. Don't speak here for 12 years, and then the first thing you do is try to be somebody else. Be who you are. Be the best version of you.
Well, I had a neighbor who graduated from Space Coast, and they said you spoke, and somebody said you were really good. I'm like, are we talking about the same person?
It was halftime talk. Right, Stan? All right, brother.
I did do, you know, I'm pretty busy from time to time, so I don't write all of this stuff down. But the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization, I went there. And I went to the mayor's breakfast with their fine, wonderful scrambled eggs.
Thank you for that.
And great bacon. I don't eat grits, so I don't know.
If there's no grits, I'm not going. City manager?
Yes, sir. Just a reminder, this Thursday, 30th of May, the Natural Resources Open House will be held here in the council chambers between 6:00 and 8:00 PM. And we're getting ready for 4th of July already.
You said Thursday?
Yes, sir. Thursday, May 30th.
I do not have that on my calendar. Right here.
Yes, sir.
And I hate to do this, but what time did you say?
6:00 to 8:00 PM, Natural Resources Open House Public Workshop.
I will plan to be here. Thank you very much. Okay, you good? You good? City manager, you good? It's the Natural Resources Open House. I don't think it made it on our calendars. Here.
They have like St. John's.
Are we ready? Yeah, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
All right. If no further stuff, we are adjourned or dismissed.